I'll bring.
Figure that out if you want to start.
I'm there. These, these aren't. Right, I'm call the, uh, this. Needs this evening's meeting of the planning commission to order. Uh, it's, uh, for something. Four thirty three, September, and the first item of business will be, uh, pledge of allegiance. We all stand, raise black.
But that's what I just go to black. You know, I can see it was very. To recall other courts of the standing. But maybe you should, I forgot, it is visible, but the liberty he does just for all of them.
All right, we'll start with the role here. Commissioner Higgin. Commissioner Songstad. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Frankenbach. Okay, we have a quorum. There are a few people absent, but we have a quorum. Any changes to the agenda?
Well.
Any announcements?
So, we have a, an agenda, it's joint meeting with the board and the planning mission. Tomorrow and on Thursday. I believe it's tomorrow morning.
Nine thirty, nine thirty, yeah, yeah.
So I think that.
What a thirty one again.
I thirty.
Nothing like it on Thursday was canceled.
No, so Thursday, the twenty eighth was canceled, so last week.
Last week.
And it was pushed to this week, so not all the commissioners could be there. So. We have one more warning, then this Thursday at one thirty to, I think, three o'clock is most scheduled for, so. Going forward, it's roughly every Thursday. There's one week, I think, there the commissioners are out of town, so there's a week in the middle that there isn't one. Right, um, and then, so it's five workshops all on the land use component.
So are we supposed to attend that?
Um, I advertise it as a joint meeting, just in case we ended up with a form of the planning commission there. Um, it's still your application. And your input could be valuable to the board, but it is, it's on their plate now, and they have some ideas on what they wanna. Add to and, you know, make revisions of on the planning part of the land use component, so. Um, but I know you've been, I think, I've seen actively members of the planning commission there. Um, so just in case we ended up with four of you, um, advertise this directly, so. Other than that, um.
Can you send a link to me? It's nine thirty tomorrow.
Yes.
But I, I could attend by Zoom, but, but.
Sure, I can send a link out. Anybody else want to zoom link that? They. All right, yeah. When I get it set up, I'll make sure it's set up. The. The text amendments, so the two of them that were scheduled for last week were rescheduled. Um. It was made into the paper, but it didn't make it to the agencies for the application, so. That's what happened.
Again?
It did not.
Again?
No, so it's been scheduled for the sixteenth. Um. Uh, September. That was all I.
So it's still scheduled for the sixteenth?
Correct, yeah, it was originally scheduled for last week.
Any, uh, news on? When the interviews for by the commission?
So, there. We have a number of applicants, I wanna say it was fourteen, I think it's down to thirteen now. Um, for planning and zoning commissioners. Some applied for just one commission, some applied for either, um, so the, the board. They'd like to go a different route this year, so it's gonna be an open meeting next Tuesday afternoon from one to five. Um. It'll be. Planning commission applicants only from like one o'clock to two o'clock. Those who applied for planning and zoning, so either commission from two to three. And then from three to five, the zone ships, the applicants, so that was the largest group out of all of them. Um. Yeah, so we'll kinda see how that goes.
Are you encouraged, do they? Cause it's the eighth.
Monday, the eighth, thank you, yes. Most of them are on Tuesday. I was just thinking, I haven't, I haven't published that agenda yet, needing to get it out to there as well, so, yes, Monday, the eighth, from one to five.
Okay. All right, remove, uh. We don't have a public comment on the agenda. Oh, it's not. On the way. All right, we'll do the consent count, this consent agenda first, that's the meaning, the approval of the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, everybody had a chance to read those, uh. Any modifications, alterations? Corrections? Hearing none, the, uh. Minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty five are approved. And we'll, we'll insert public comment here. Wait, put, put a comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Save your money. All of their hands up.
All right. Then we have a presentation on source water protection. By Jack Howard. So if you'd come forward and. Take the mic there.
Okay.
For the presentation.
I think either one's fine, either one.
Yeah, what do you, what do you want first on the screen, Jack?
Well, the well. Well. Well, oh, thanks for having us, um. Of. Cass Larson and I are on, on board of, um, Southside. And, uh, this story is gonna start with, uh, the well that we've drilled with our. Our profans, um, so. We were able to drill this well, um, to take. The place of a kind of a sketchy sister in well. And I wanted to share this, this is, uh, just. About the day after it opened. Uh, the well was developed, we had, uh, two hundred gallons a minute. Of flowing through this well, through PSI, it's an arti- a true artesian well. One of the few new artesian wells. My dog, can't really see it in the video here, but my dog was. Drinking that water profusely, um, cause it's really amazing water, chemically. It's really perfect water. And so that well, um. Uh, really kinda asked the question, how do we preserve the quality of this well, so? That began a conversation that, uh, led to Travis, um, was. Formerly in the planning department, um, how do we protect this groundwater, and? He suggested groundwater overlay, and. Uh, from there, we met with Jake. And. Jake said, geez, I saw a presentation by Local Water. Uh, and I contacted, uh, the presenter of that, um, and he's online, Flint Hall. He's a. A retired, uh, DEQ jail geohydrologist of thirty years, um, and I asked, uh, um, would you help him? Um, you know, how, how, how can you help us preserve this, uh, groundwater quality? So that's where this all started from. Uh, and really, as, as we look at. What's happened in North Idaho, we have pretty good water quality here, and that's a great thing, that we can still. Make that claim that we have great water quality by, uh, measurement, and all the analysis measurements that are, are done. That's not true in Southern Idaho, in the East Snake. Aquifer plain, um, they have declining water quality in their groundwater, and they have no groundwater protection overlay or any kind of. Program like we have, what we're presenting here. For the benefit of the groundwater that we still have, uh, great quality, but. So with that, I'd like to go to the first slide, and I don't know if you guys, have you had a chance to see this, the deck? You know, I'm not a death by PowerPoint, I'm not gonna read you each point. I, what I wanna do is talk about the points so that we could kind of have, have discussion, why are we here, what are we doing? And, and what is this for, um, so? Just, I do think it's important to center up on the first slide. Which, or second slide, actually, with, uh, what are the problems that we recognize? Really, land use is a critical component. Of water quality. How, how we use the water cha- changes it from. Ho- how we use land changes water quality, there's a direct causal impact of human activity with that. Uh, so the county's role in this is a vital one in the state of Idaho. And really all over the country, um, so the, the problem with this, though, is that the counties have no real scientific resource. Nobody has Flint Hall, there's only one Flint Hall. How do we, so that's kinda how we recognize this problem is, they have limited resources, counties can't hire. The science background, uh, people, they're not available to hire anyway, really, they're very scarce to find, so. We've tried to pack in something that will. Uh, reflect the science within, in the methods that we use, so that we don't have to have the staff. So we consulted with, uh, DEQ. Um, and, uh, other state agencies, uh, uh, through Flint's contacts, because he's worked with all these people for a long time. We know, uh, he has that, that link to. To the resources of the state, and they've been involved with this as well, so they're aware of this. Um, the, the last thing is really, we're, we're looking at today. You know, everybody loves the valleys of, of. Bonner County, you know, we, you know, this, this is where we all live, we live down in the Sally Valley, we live in the Sago Valley. You know, we live in the valleys, and all that area is moving from. Rural to urban, and so that impact on urbanization is something that, this is a tool for us to. Plan. And to recognize what's happening, that, that's the basic gist of what we're trying to address with these problems. So, any questions about this? And so far, I, I will kinda move through it pretty quickly, so. I wanna make sure we're all out of set on the next slide, please, what, what, what is an overlay? And, uh, the way I've explained this to most people is like, you know, we already have overlays in the county, we have the airport overlay, so nobody's building a. You know, high-rise apartments or office buildings at the end of the runway. Out, out of the airport, it just is, it's kind of a common sense. Uh, approach. Uh, so, um, what we're focusing on is the fact that, uh, groundwater is its own area, and so we know that from, uh, science. Uh, from aquifer studies that first probably done by De Smet. In eighty-three, that's really the only study on Sago. So it's designating an area, and then they're looking at the impact of. Of what, what goes on in that overlay, just like in airport, we're looking at, well. There's a lot of people drinking water from this, this aquifer in Sago, right, so what's gonna happen? Uh, can we afford to have more urbanization, what's the impact of that? We can use this tool to measure. What those impacts are over the, with they are currently, what they've been. And, and what they will be in the future.
How, how are you doing, though? How are you measuring the?
Well, there's already, uh, quantitative information stored, we, we submit, Southside's been submitting data to DEQ since two thousand. Longer than, I don't know, long times, fifty years.
Does that, does that indicate the capacity of the groundwater aquifer?
Uh, the, the ours would, uh, the. For example, Southside and Sago Valley would also be doing water quality analysis that we have well, one of the layers in this overlay. Is that we have well had measurements, so that we know how deep the groundwater is, and we've been making those measurements. Uh, Southside, uh, gave that data to, uh, Water Resources, because we have the most complete set of data, so. We're lucky that it's not really changing, you know, there are aquifers that are declining and getting pulled out of, and right now, today, as it stands, nobody would know. Right, so without an overlay program, we have way, no way of knowing how, how aquifers are being drawn out.
I don't understand, so how does the overlay program? Predict? Um. The. The capacity or usability of the aquifer, I don't, I'm not sure I follow that.
Sure, um, I'll get, I'll be getting into that, that's, that, that's a, a slide in here, um, there's a specific slide that I can speak to that.
Okay.
And I wanna make sure that question gets answered.
Yeah, yeah.
So on the, on the slide here, the one on the left, is that where the wells are?
Yes.
That's just over the wells, are that the monitored wells, or?
Those are wells of private and public sources.
Okay, so, I know when De Smet did the study back at, whenever.
Yeah.
Uh, it wasn't that many.
Right.
Close, it was like sixteen wells or something all around. Had there been more added for monitoring?
Uh, no, well, a few by, and that's one of the points of this program, um, that, that there. Yeah, we need more, and we should coordinate what we're doing, because there's, there's not a lot of coordination, so one of the things we wanna go back. With the authority of this program in the county, we wanna go back and try and coordinate what's going on between DEQ and Idaho Rural, uh, or, sorry, Idaho's Water Resources, and then. The public systems, you know, what's Southside and what's Sago Valley, there's. Four systems just in Sago already, so we need to harvest and. And coordinate that data, that, that's kind of the idea of one of the things of what we're asking. Let's got it.
And the outline, the outline of this overlay area.
Yeah.
That, is that the extent of the aquifer we're talking about?
Yeah, this particular one, right. But, but the, you know, I don't wanna. Part out of myself, but, but one of the things that we're trying to do, one of the things that we've recognized is that. Prior attempts that have been done in the state are very specific. Like the Raffrum Prairie Aquifer, all that law is only about that aquifer, and implies nothing else. And so what do you do with the other, there's hot, probably, well, hunters, I think, nobody knows really how many aquifers we have. I know there's one in Godri County that, um, Cabinet Mountain Water District draws from. Not even a recognized area yet, but this program could be plugged in. To that situation, so that it's, it's really kind of, think of this as a framework of a number of proven techniques that we've. Proven techniques and approaches both in land use and the science side that we're putting together into one tool. So that, that's the basic idea. Yes. That Flint?
Yeah.
That's my partner in crime.
Uh, I can, I can add a few more things that provides some detail, yes, the. And we will get into, uh, a few slides into it, uh. One of the methodologies, uh, first, we know quite a bit about, uh. About the aquifer due to, uh, monitoring and other work done by different state agencies by IDWR. Uh, for example, you know, we can look at IDWR well records to see how many. Wells there are within our, or study areas, the Sago Aquifer. And so there's a lot of information there, there's information on soils, there's, uh, there's information. Uh. On various modeling efforts, one of the, uh, one of the responsibilities that, that DEQ has is to do source water protection, source water assessment modeling. And so there's a lot of groundwater information, but, uh, where we're getting to with this, and. And a few slides further, uh. There's a specific EPA methodology. Of, uh, of how to bring together different sources of information to assess. Quantitatively. Vulnerability, and, uh. The, this presentation doesn't focus on, on the details, because we need to get the big overview, but I actually have a, a white paper that's. I need to make one quick run-through that, uh, I could present, that shows you. All the details, it shows you that, where the data comes from, it shows you what it looks like, so this is a, a fair, this is a. It's a. Uh, Jack and I were talking about earlier, uh, this is a fully baked product that we would like to show you. But, uh, what we have focus on for, for tonight is really the introduction, and then. You know, later, we can, we can get to, uh. You know, we can focus on the details, but, uh, to let the, to set the groundwork, I think is very important now, and, and that's really what Jack is, uh. Is, uh, focusing on with the slides that we have for tonight.
So, uh, maybe we'll go on to the next one, we'll get into some more detail, um. Really, the purpose, we're trying to protect public health at the end of the day, I mean, these are the goals that we're really after, we wanna. We wanna understand what our water is. So that we can manage it going forward and understand what's happening before it's too late, and unfortunately, that's. That's what's happened in Southern Idaho, is it, it's too late down there, and we are ahead of the game, and I'd like to see us stay ahead of the game, that's, that's really the idea here. So, uh, the last thing, uh, there's, I, I wanna go on to the next, uh, thing, I think really the problem with groundwater is that this last point is it's really invisible. We all just think we can pop into a well and get good water, and that just isn't the reality of. Anywhere, you know, we were fortunate to have this great artesian well, but, um. We wanna, we wanna elevate. The role of groundwater, because that's where we get most of our well, our water, I think, I think the last time I talked to you guys, I asked how many people get there. You know, how, how many are, you're drinking well water, I am, you know, we all raised our hands, and so that's what this is about. I'm gonna make, uh, groundwater visible, uh, hey, click in. One on the next one, here, here's the, there are nineteen reporting agencies, uh, uh, groups, the top systems, I'll call them system. Nineteen systems, four public water systems. And fifteen community water systems just in Sago. And so what we wanna do is really gather that data and coordinate it. Uh, and the other thing, at the same time, most of this water, um, is also on septic, on top of septic systems, this is the most dense septic. Uh, system area in the county. And, uh, it has a very high level of that, so all of our source water is coming from the same area where. Where we're using septic, and that, that's one of the concerns that we have. And we have long had, um. So, the, the next slide, um, you know, the McFarlane. Whole plant, you, you know, uh, uh, on Baldi Mountain Road, that, that plant was discovered. Retroactively, and today. Uh, if we had one of those on the Sago. In the Sago for, currently with current groundwater monitoring, we wouldn't know that that was being polluted. That groundwater was polluted, just like this happened, uh, forty years ago, when the pollution first started here, and I think it might be even longer. So, the, the point here is that we're really not monitoring, I think everybody thinks. That somebody's looking at the water, but the, the news is, nobody is. Right, we just look at a few things, nitrates, and what we wanna expand and, and look at what's being actually looked at in groundwater. So it's kind of frightening, when I, when I talk, told the story to other people, you know, you assume. That somebody's looking, and the reality is that that's not happening. All right, next slide, please, um. The, the data is a big deal to this whole process, um, in fact, one of the critical things that we're asking for. Is, um, when we'll get to the ask, but what we wanna do is. Gather the data that's already there, most of the data is already available. Uh, most of the data in the, in the overlay program is already available, and, and we'll talk to that a little bit later. Uh, which is great, right, so what we wanna do is automate this metric. How the groundwater vulnerability is measured, wanna automate that, so it becomes a viable tool for the planning department to just be able to use. What we don't want, and we feel it ac- actually would fail, this program would fail without the automation of the calculations of the number, we have to automate that. And that's, uh, very doable, we've looked at, uh, as Flint alluded to, we've looked at how to do that already, and we've already gathered that data. And those, not those graphics that you were seeing on the, uh, overlay slide, those are all real. Uh, one of them is this, the soils guy from, um, that's published by the Idaho, state of Idaho, that's not gonna change, you know, soil is not gonna change in this aquifer, so. A lot of those, uh, a lot of the data that we're looking at is already there. So, uh, the next slide, please, the, the four legs here, really what we're looking at is, uh, maps. You know, it's all about maps, this is a map of the, uh. The density of wealth. Uh, this is how many private and public wells there are in the Sago. Uh, in the Sago Valley, right, each one of these actually technically. Uh, is a potential, um, you know, if that well goes bad, we're all, we're all in this together, right, all, all this is. Sitting on top of our well, so. The, the symbols here, um, just for in general terms, show the depth of the water, to answer your question, Alan. You know, we, we know from the, the depths, that's what they are, technically. This is raw data, what we probably would look at is maybe designating some core sets of wells in a network, we don't have to have wa- groundwater. Levels from each well. But certainly, there's some critical areas that we would like to have those, those well levels, um. The groundwater levels, so, the other thing is, um. The interesting thing, when we first talked with Jake in the first meeting, uh, well, have protection laws already in, in. The, the books here, and with Bonner County. Uh, it's just never been implemented, it's been in there since two thousand eight, so there's laws about how to protect wells. Uh, and, and the quality of the water around them, and. Uh, that's very fortunate, because now we don't have to invent that law, it's already there, it's a standard, I, I would say it's a fairly standard. Um, set of ordinances that exist. Um, so, we're just, we, we have kind of an interesting way of combining that work that's already been done, I think, with. What we're proposing to be done. So, um. This index is just a number. Right, so basically, we'll, we'll get into this a little bit more, the fourth thing here really is about, or the third thing is. It, it's coming up with a, a vulnerability number. And, uh, we'll get into what that's about, but that's kind of an important thing for everybody, cause it's a proven way of doing it, and then, the last thing. Is that public awareness and how people manage their septic systems is important to groundwater quality. So there's a public awareness that we currently, nobody. Nobody's thinking about that, in my opinion, or, in my observation, I've been here a long time, we just don't think about. Our groundwater and how to treat it properly, so, Idaho Rural Water is standing by, they have a communication program ready to go. And, uh, that's on, at the end of the slide, but those are the four things, the ma- the maps. And uh, that's on, at the end of the slide, but those are the four things, the ma, the maps, the ordinances that are already there. The idea of an index, a number, we'll pick a number between one, ten, ten's really vulnerable. Zero is invulnerable, right, so picking, pulling all these four things together to uh, create this uh, program.
So. Jack, can we, Jack, can we go back to that slide again? Yeah, so some additional information, this uh, this, the, this map here, this slide really lays out. Why what we have in place. Really isn't sufficient, uh, one of the tools, one of the responsibilities DEQ has is to do. Source water time of travel zones. And that, uh, tho, those are the cone shaped, you know, the blue, yellow and, and orange zones that you see. Uh, it's based on groundwater modeling, it's based on EPA methodology, it's uh, it's the core of how. Uh, groundwater protection ordinance that already exists. Is organized, it says that the area to protect is the area within its source water delineation, however. You see, that's not where all the wells are. That's not, that also doesn't reflect the density of wells and nor does it reflect. Other concerns such as uh, land use and the density of septics. Thus, the existing information is, is very good. But it doesn't provide the level of protection that will happen and will be a result of. This groundwater index that that we're proposing to uh, to be able to put into play. But that's, that's really the short story is uh. What we have is great, but what we have isn't sufficiently protective.
Now, I think, I think the last thing too, one of the things about this, this is all shown in the GIS, in a GIS system, the same one that the county uses. So what we would actually do is you'd be able to see this in the overlay, so the planning department would be able to. Uh, see all these layers and, and see together all of the. And including the vulnerability map of, of how this is all being pulled together, so. These aren't just graphic pictures, they're, they're actually screenshots out of the GIS system that the county uses and that's what we would. We're proposing to do and they ask part of this presentation that's coming, is to have some time with the GIS department.
Are you gonna get into more detail about exactly what on this graphic? What this represents, can I ask it now?
Go ahead and ask it now.
I was just gonna say, just for clarity, I'm just. The, the blue outline, I'm guessing is the Sagal Aquifer you referred to.
Yes.
Um, the dots represent different wells, known wells anyway, and the depths at which they.
Yeah.
Water. Um. Explain again, I think Flint started to touch on it, what the. The groundwater movement zones, I think, yeah, so what does that mean when we're looking at, I mean, is, is a red zone good, or is a yellow good, or is it a blue good?
Right.
Those are, those are time of travel zones. Yeah, those are time of travel zones.
Okay, uh, I, so really the, the point. With the old process where you see the overlay, the, the, the blue hatch lines with the yellow. That was sort of measuring the plume of water as it supposedly goes towards one well. But we're, what we're really saying is now, what's really important are all the wells. Right, we, we're, this isn't just about South Side, in fact, South Side is just one of over four hundred wells. And so what we, what we're really looking at is uh, man, managing the quality of water for all the wells in the valley. In this overlay zone. So, so it's, yeah, I think this is a kind of a, an important point that, that we're not just. This isn't just about one well, it's about all these wells and they all have these characteristics and we're saying all of them should be protected together because. We're all living together, right? Good job.
Mm-hmm.
So just for the record, this is an treasury based product similar to what we use in GIS, we don't have this tool on hand to you now. So just, you said it's, it's the same one we have, it's the base model of where, where we, where we put our data into, right? It's not a, it's not an application we have developed, yeah. Yeah, Flint, Flint has it on his system using the same platform.
Yep.
That the county uses and that's why we know that we can hand it off or, because those. County has an amazing GIS department. Uh, so that, that, what, what we want to do is have a smooth handoff with that, no. They'll uh. They'll think we're rookies, I'm sure.
Well, I, I, maybe I missed this, but. Can you tell me what, what, what are the blue lines and the yellow lines and the orange lines, what do they, what do they represent?
So, so uh. The EPA back in the beginning of looking at groundwater, this is where they measured how. Uh, time of transport. Meaning how fast does the water flow, so. The area in the blue is like, hey, don't worry about it, yellow, well, you gotta start reading, red is like, can't do stuff there. And that's really kind of reflected already today in the, in the wellhead protection law that's in the books with the county today. An example would be. You can't, i- i- in the wellhead production law, you can't. Put in a, uh, an auto wrecking yard right next to the Sagal lock, to the, what we are pulling our water out of itself. Southside, right, because auto wrecking yards are notorious for polluting groundwater, because all the well. From the contaminants from the cars sinking, that, or sanitary landfill. Nobody wants to put in a sanitary landfill, now, these are hypothetical things that aren't relevant, but they're examples of the kind of protection that happens by. By time of transport, so.
Jack, but. The next three slides provide some good definition for you, so if we move to those, I think we can address your, I can fill in the blanks on these.
Okay, uh. Matt, you got a question?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so let, let's go on to the next one, so. Uh, vulnerability index, um, you know, this is the history of them. Uh, a proven tool, one, one of the things that we feel the planning department is up against is prove why. Prove our numbers, is this isn't, this is not an opinion based idea, this is all a data driven decision system. And that's what the drastic tool that was originally developed by the EPA. Uh, took at, uh, a pro, a cut at. And it's, and it's widely proven scientifically, so we're, we're not making this. Vulnerability index based on opinion, we're basing it on proven science that's been in place for forty years. And I think that's an important thing, the other thing that's happened commonly. Is that uh, this drastic index has been extended. Uh, and that's what Flint has done, uh, and that's what the purpose of his white paper, because everybody in the science community knows what drastic is, I mean. And that was part of our appeal of using it, it's like, we're not inventing anything new, we're just taking what's proven. And we're tweaking it slightly. The two tweaks that we're looking at is um. To really reflect the Earl to urban uh, transition, right, which is land use and um. The uh, septic density, so today, we don't know how dense. The septic systems are in the, in currently in the aquifer, because Panhandle doesn't have that data as far as we know. But we're gonna find out, that's, that's one of our goals, to find out. What, what we actually have out there. So. Alan, you were asking, you know, so what we're looking at, what goes into our number that um. Depth to groundwater is, the D in, in drastic is an acronym, right, so um. All of these numbers are, are, are used to calculate a number and then we. Flint, as I mentioned, his extension of land use and septic density. Tweak the final number. Right, so uh, this is where the science comes in and this is why counties have a hard time doing this, it's because. Who's, people having the expertise to understand how to tweak the drastic in, index. You know, I just happened to find the guy by saying, can you help me? Uh, when I, when I first started this process, I, I happened to find the guy, uh, you know, that could do that, so. Um, that, that's kind of serendipitous for all of us, but it's serendipitous to the whole program wherever it's applied. So uh, you know, there's another level of scrutiny that this will go through with the state, but we've already done some of that. And uh, enough to know that they're all, everybody's nodding their head on the state side. So those are the other things, this is kind of the, the kicker, or this is kind of how it actually mapped out when uh. Flint did the run through and I'll, I'll let Flint describe. These are the calculations of, of the uh, the vulnerability index and how they play out on the map. And then how we tie. What is most vulnerable to the existing wellhead protection law? Ordinances that are there, but you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, you wanna pass it back to the previous slide? Okay, so. You know, as Jack was indicating that uh. Uh, in the Safe Drinking Water Act, there are several different means that EPA has set out to try to aid. Communities in, in dealing with water quality. Uh, one of them is uh, is uh, using uh, LAM model, it's, it's a specific. Fairly simplistic groundwater model that gives uh, time of travel. And uh, the different colored zones appearing on that previous slide with, with the wells. Uh, those different colors indicate time of travel, the blue is six to ten, the uh. Uh, the intermediate color of the yellow is uh, is uh, six to, six to four or six to three. And then the darker or the red color, the orange color is zero to three, that, that just says. Based on modeling, this is how long it takes for water to get to the specific drinking water source. So that's, that's that basis, but it only provides information. Just where that, that uh, that modeled uh, aquifer, you know, the, the aquifer model indicates waters going this way. Uh, for, for the drastic model, another EPA model, of course, is uh. It utilizes information that uh, that's really provides physical parameters that's, that talk about the groundwater and typically don't change. Depth to groundwater, uh, the Wells database from IDWR has that, it's updated constantly, it's updated annually. Uh, the, the R represents recharge and that's an estimated value that, but uh, but others. Modeling information provides a, a number for that. Aquifer media, uh, there are different modeling exercises that uh. That have come up with a, a very good study of, of the aquifer for and, and what particular geologic materials are there for uh. You know, for the Sagal Valley, so that's already known, soil media, the soil survey, the. And, you know, the statewide soil survey provides, already has that information. And the cons, you know, the concern there with soil media is, is it alone? Is it more clay, you know, what's the uh, what's the soil retention capacity and, and how quickly does, do things move through? Uh, topography gives an indication of slope and, and how much runs off. Impact of Vado Zone says, well, are there. For example, are there confining layers underneath, how much does that impact, hydraulic conductivity, that's something that uh. You basically. Estimate by inference, and so there's a lot of information, a lot of uh, variability that could happen with that. But the two things that I think are the most important and probably the most valuable for uh. You know, for the, for the commission to consider is being able to use land use, land use. Uh, there's the National Land Use Database that uh, gave, gives us spacious remote sensing information, but it's updated yearly. That gives an estimate of land use. You know, be it uh, different types of forest, is it, is it industrial, is it, is it residential, so forth. You can see exactly what land use is and the impact on land use is. How much water either infiltrates or runs off and what potential sources of contamination are there? So those two pieces are really. Uh, dynamic information, uh, the septic density, uh, in discussions with the. In examples in the literature and discussions with the, with the Health District, there's a couple of ways to, to come up with uh, with an estimate of that and it's. It's based on uh. Either based on parcels. Uh. It's true that the, that the Health District doesn't, hasn't correlated. Uh, where there is a septic tank to it, to a spatial index, so they don't have a, a, a. Our GIS coverage, it shows that, but if, if it's a well that's, that's domestic. That's not within the service area of a, of a sewer or water district. Then it likely has a septic system and so that can be a way to estimate that. The end result is a spatial distribution. With these particular factors included and some weighting factors, for example, depth of groundwater is. Means that uh, the shallower the groundwater, the more impactful that is. Uh, and so forth, we'll go to the next slide now. So adding up these. You know, these uh, nine characteristics. With their weights. You get uh, you get in essence a, a color map. And so the, the cooler the color, the more blue. The lower that number is and the less, you know, the lower the vulnerability is. The higher that number is, the warmer that number is, the higher the index and thus the greater the uh, you know, the greater the, the vulnerability is. And what you can see from this. You know, I've, another picture in, in the, in the white paper, I've overlaid the uh. You know, the I ninety five or the Highway ninety five corridor and you can clearly see, you know, that's the warmer areas or. That's where development happens. But some of the other areas that are approached that warmer, those warmer colors. May not be as, they're not within sewer and water districts. And uh, and they're less, maybe less industrial, but they're more residential development. So what this can show right off the bat is there are certain areas where. Uh, the septic density. And uh, and land use. Uh, results in increased vulnerability to groundwater in those particular areas. And if you remember the uh, the source water delineation, the, the blue and the yellow and the orange. That's not, the uh, where the index indicates a greater risk. Is different from where the, the, the time of travel zones that the current ordinance. Uh, allows protection in occurs. So this shows the difference and this shows one of the ways a spatial outcome. Can be generated to help, uh, help with planning, planning decisions.
I think one, one of the interesting things about this particular graphic is that. Um, when you overlay, uh. For example, what South Side serves. The, the upper uh, right tier is all serviced by um, mountain springs and South Side's water system, so. Their, their water is uh, not affected by the vulnerability because of the service coming from. The South Side wells or mountain spring wells. So they're taken care of in that, in that area, so um. Uh, the, any questions about this at this point?
Uh, yeah, well, I guess. Yes, I do, um. Alright, so if you go down to the one fifty three to the one seventy one. The greatest risk area.
Yeah.
So what? What land use policies would flow from an area that's been identified as greatest risk?
Sure, that, that actually is addressed exactly in the current wellhead protection law. Uh, that's in, in, on the books in the county, so they enumerate the things. That would, how that would be treated and that, alls we're doing is mapping what's already on the books. Uh, with Bonner County to that area, so they have in the wellhead protection law. Uh, they have that, if you're right next to the, somebody's well, you, there's restrictions that exist about that.
Wait. If an area is described as a wellhead protection area, this is not, there isn't one in the county yet.
Right.
There was one about twelve, fifteen years ago that was proposed out to the west over towards Freez River. And it was so soundly defeated by the people living there. That, you know, the commissions at times said, put this back on the shelf. It was just, because it is so subject to vulnerable, or uh. The uh. Various criteria.
Right.
They're very subjective and they change. Foot to foot to foot.
Yeah, exactly.
The, the soil index, uh, the, the permeability index and so forth. Those places in Sagal where, uh, we know from water flow and so forth that there's. There's a lot of rock in there that blocks the flow until they round it to get down, down to the lake. It generally flows from the south to the north, to the lake. But. I, I don't know, it's just, yeah, looking at this map. Uh. It, it's hard to. Cause we don't have roads on there, so, but um.
Yeah, Don, Don, what I would say, what the difference is between what we're proposing now and then. Is we're gonna have a lot of data to support what we're talking about then.
Yeah.
We have that. Then, you know, to me, the, the, having the different wells and taking measurements from them, provide a different uh, scope. Of what we're looking at, so it's less subjective. Cause I think that's the, the point, maybe the point you're making is that we don't want this to be highly subjective, right, this is a cannonball issue.
Yeah.
Right, so the whole approach to utilizing data in the way that we're trying to do that is the difference.
Yeah, but to me, it's still subjective, but you're saying you're assuming it's a septic. You don't have the numbers, there's a lot of assumptions still in this data.
Uh, not, no, this is all quantitative data, all this.
It's that Panhandle can't give you the location of something, you're assuming, you just said, I was assuming.
Well, we, we, we do, they do have what septics have been located by the law. We don't have the, what I said previously was, we don't have the exact geo coordinates of those wells and, yeah, if we were to look at. Proceeding with this, having strategic wells that we would use with precise data, but this is approximate because. Even the water um. Resources, that they have not precisely geolocated data, but. Each of, of these wells, so when we get that, I think that's one of the things that we wanted, this one, I think we want to do that we make this very precise, so there is no. Subjectivity.
So it'd be nice to see, so these areas that are showing up in the one fifty three to one seventy one.
Yeah.
Category. You know, to see the cumulative, cumulative data. And why they ended up that way.
Yes.
Uh. Just to scientifically look at it.
Yeah, exactly, I think.
The end result, but.
Yeah.
How'd you get there?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, i- is there. One or a small number of the eight factors that are driving those into that range?
See, that, that's the important thing.
Or is it, is it all eight are contributing, or is it?
Or is it, is it all eight are contributing or is it? It'd be interesting to know what is it that's driving that?
Exactly. So when you go back to that slide before where we had the components of the formula, we would have, we would have the precise data for each of those that this is how we came up to it. Now, one of the examples could be in some cases there, some of the data that we saw, because we just took the raw data from water resource, so they're claiming they have wells at five feet.
Okay.
Well.
All right.
That's the data that we have, but that goes back to the, the, the part of the filtering and developing of the poor data that's going to go into this. And so we, we're pretty sure there are no five foot wells. In Sagal, probably not, right?
So here's a, here's a question, Jack. Is it possible? If we could, is it possible for me to share? Because I have each of the nine images that comprise that composite result. If I can share the PDF, I can do, I can do that.
Yeah. It's gotta be a way, but. So Flynn, I just made you, uh, our panelist, if you accept that, that and you should be able to share from your screen.
Okay, let me, uh, do that and we'll see how quickly I can get there. All right.
So Jack also, the squares that are shown, are those quarter section or do you know, are they?
That's a, uh, tho- those are, um, polygons and, and we're, I know what size that is. No, exactly. And so.
Those are quarter sections.
A quarter section, looked like quarter section.
Yeah.
There, there's.
Right, so.
Thought about what polygons we're gonna, we would use.
Yeah.
What would be appropriate?
Nothing, nothing comes in quarter section size.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you make your screen bigger, Flynn?
Yeah, let me see if I can make that bigger. Yeah, there's, uh, the, uh, looking through the literature, there's, there's a number of, uh, number of people, again, have tried that, no, no, a number of authors have dealt with this drastic. And, uh, you're limited by resolution of the data. With, uh, with the vast majority of the, uh, well, I think prior to about two thousand, most of the IDWR wells, you know, there may be twelve hundred of them in Sagal Valley. But most of them prior to that were located by quarter, quarter section. And so that's, you know, that's as good as, as older data are. But, uh, this table, we have our, our drastic, uh, equation, but this table looks at the different combinations of factors. Uh, we have depth of groundwater and the way EPA set it up, you weighted, uh, weighted by categories from one to ten, but depth of groundwater is the, is the most critical. And so it has a higher weighting factor. Uh, net recharge, you know, it's, that's all the, the three, four different, uh, modeling efforts that I found. Took a look at recharge and estimated anywhere from, from less than point one inches per year to, you know, to, to eighteen. So that's, that's all across the board. Aqua for material, there's a, you know, Graham and Campbell in nineteen eighty-one is the standard for what geologic media is for the state. So that's that. Soil media, again, we talked about that. The, uh, the soil concerns in the soil mapping shows that, uh, you know, it's, we're mostly sandy loam or silt loam, that's pretty fairly permeable. But, uh.
So. But one point there, just on that one, to the, to the, to the point I think these guys have is we had thinner absent soil in ten of them and we know that there's soil in Sagal.
Right.
Right? So you, you know, what we're, what we're proposing is we would develop this, this further uh, and, and pile it in for actual use. Cause you have to, just as like you guys are exploring here, we have to be able to defend these numbers. Everybody does, right? I mean, we can't just say, uh, you know, this is, the number is nine, you know, we have to say how we got to nine so that then we can go back and, and do some, uh, validity checking, you know, well, jeez, if all these, uh, highly vulnerable's have thinner absent soil, that's probably s- something that we're going to have to take a look at because we, like I said, we know that there's soil in Sagal, um. And, and to Flynn's point, it, in most all cases, it is sandy loam, is the Schmidt, uh, documented. So those are some gaps that we've got.
So, so the weight given to each of these categories, is that something that's set by this model from EPA? Or is that something you changed? Or has that changed?
We.
Issues in the model?
Yeah, well, a little of both, right? We're using their core model on how to do those things, although all the science is proven. Our, I think our, our efforts are really to make sure we've got a good network of data going into the, into the formulas. It's not wrong with the formulas. We've got to make sure that our data is right.
So it's, it's also easier to, in my mind, in the course that I've done, uh, if I can stand on published work that others have done, that it's peer reviewed, it's a whole lot easier to focus on the things that actually are variable for our region, for this area. And so, yeah, there's, you know, again, uh, one of the steps with this particular process is to, is to pass it by, you know, Port Lane Regional Office and, and Seth, the hydrogeologist there to make sure that there's concurrence, that this is a reasonable, reasonable approach. But, uh, anyway, moving on down. Taking those weights.
Yeah, all right, Flynn. Yeah, part of your answer to Eric's question.
Yep.
Seemed like there was some subjectivity in here, but I thought what I heard earlier was that, now this model is established scientifically proven.
Yes.
There's no variability. You can't say, no, I'm going to change my rating for granite versus silty loam. It's like set. If the ground is granite, then you use that number.
Exactly right.
Okay, I just misunderstood.
Yeah, well, what I was saying was, well, I was really specifically referring to the wa- well data that we got from Water Resources. Well, like I said, the point I made where we have a number at five feet, we gotta, we gotta pull those out of that.
Okay, but once you get factual data, this model is locked in, basically.
Exactly.
Yes. And, and different, different aspects are a whole lot easier to, to have uh, solid information. So some factors, uh, for example, depth of groundwater, that's testable, that's refinable, that can be made as best as the, the data set allows. Uh, net recharge, you know, again, that's, that's something that because the, the valley floor is pretty much the same elevation, uh, the net recharge isn't likely to change a lot because we don't have things such as, uh, such as in Eastern Idaho where we have irrigation that, uh, that is a significant contributor to, uh, you know, to, to recharge. So that factor is fairly constant, fairly stable for here. We move down to, uh, uh, this, this next, uh, so that's the depth of groundwater. The, uh, the one to the right is the vulnerability is, uh, recharge. The next, the next one down is, uh, is aquifer material based on the Graham and Campbell nineteen eighty standard. Uh, the other one, the next one over is, uh, is a composite rating for the forty acre, you know, for the forty acres quarter, quarter section based on soils. Uh, higher rating or shallower mo- or more, uh, actually higher rating or more permeable soils. Lower rating or less permeable soils. But that's testable and that's an existing data set. So that doesn't change for us. Moving down the next one, topography, that's from the digital elevation model and it, the, uh, the intent there is, uh, if there's greater runoff, there's less water sitting in one spot to infiltrate. And, uh, the next one, uh, the Vados Zone Impact, this is probably is figure seventeen, is probably the most difficult in my mind of the, uh, of the characteristics to, to look at. But, but others, De Schmidt and others have done modeling and have established groundwater models that have looked at the hydrogeology. And so that's a, that's a standard we would, we would stick with. I would propose that we stick with is, is what has other published researchers provided for the area. Cause it's not something, you know, it's not something Bonner County has to come up with or I have to come up with because, you know, this, this research is well established. Uh, the next one down, hydraulic conductivity, that's really an estimate based on, based on the, uh, Graham and Campbell's, uh, estimate for, uh, for aquifer material. Uh, the next one over, uh, figure nineteen, vulnerability rating, that's a composite for the quarter section based on land use from the National Land Use Database. And, uh, some assumptions from that is, you know, there are a combination of, uh, of land uses that can be combined and more simply, uh, assessed based on, uh, based on how much runoff has increased and what potential contaminant and contaminants might occur with that. And then the last one down on this, uh, the estimate based on septic density, the factors for this, the lowest density, the lowest, uh, rating are those areas that are covered by sewer and, uh, and water districts and water service. The areas that aren't with, uh, estimates based on, on the number of wells per quarter that are domestic wells, those have a higher rating. In talking with DEQ in Corlaine and with the Public Health District, uh, DEQ, uh, in Corlaine Office can, can, uh, provide better assessment of the hydro, hydrogeology and the, and the modeling for the subsurface because that's their purview. The, uh, the, uh, Health District is very interested in, in you do, uh, in, uh, in reassessing and arriving at a means to better estimate, uh, septic density. So we have, the point that I think Jack has started off with is there are partners, the agency partners that should be doing this anyway because this is raised than any assessment of how to arrive at these particular factors is done utilizing and, and, and working with those that actually keep the data.
Hey, thanks, Flynn. Um, I'll go on to the next, uh, the next slide of, um, just, and we're, we're pretty close to wrapping up here. Um, looking at, uh, the wellhead protection code that we have here, um, I, I think the main thing about this point here on, on this slide that we're going to, uh, show next. I'll let, I'll let you get back there.
Stop the share. All right.
Um, it really, the, the important thing about groundwater is it doesn't know anything about its own. You, you know, I mean, so, so that's why this is sort of an orthogonal view to how we look at things today by incorporating this, this metric into the system is there, uh, we're not suggesting at this point what uh, goes or stays within the existing wellhead protection code. That's kind of downstream work. Uh, that, that should be considered by the future, um, the future of the planning department and, and, uh, and, and the future of this team. Uh, we're not quite there yet, but it's, it's already there and, uh, I think it's leverageable. Uh, you know, I'm looking at it, it's, it's a solid foundation of good to move forward. The last, the last two points, um, I just want to make and I'm just going to go through one slide just in the interest of time. Um, how, how does this fit within the whole context of groundwater, uh, in the state? You know, a lot of, everybody, well, in talking to different people, everybody thinks they have the ball. They're, you know, and, and it's covered, but in reality, I think this slide on slide fourteen, next one, um, the, 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 the planning department is the only a- agency in, in the whole makeup of, of our government that makes land use decisions. You know, and that, that's an important one. DEQ, first time I had this conversation about years ago with DEQ was we can only find people if they violate. We can't tell you how to use anything. That doesn't exist. And with the, the fact that there is no, uh, the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer, uh, ordinances in the state code does have some uh, prescriptive, um, measures stated for how land could be used. That doesn't apply to anywhere else in the state. So really all they can do is find you once the, the cat's out of the bag. And that's, that's what we're fundamentally, what we're trying to do is see, make this groundwater visible through this measurement program, have it actually be monitored where it isn't being monitored today. And, uh, be able to act on it before, before we have a problem. So that's the only slide I want to, uh, show on this. We some, on the next slide, um, what's the most proactive really? Uh, DEQ came up with standards. That's the most proactive thing that can be done. But really this is a close second. And I, and I'd argue this is the second most proactive thing we can do to, to, to protect our groundwater. And there really isn't anything else. You know, there's no alternative today. Um, we're certainly, we certainly looked at that across the state. What can we leverage? You know, we're not trying to invent anything. We're just trying to pull together proven components to come up with something that can be used, uh, to help protect our groundwater. The last slide I want to talk about, uh, here is just the idea of making that next one more, just the idea of how do we make it visible? Idaho Rural Water is all over what we're doing. Uh, they've provided some funding for Flynn's time. Uh, and, uh, I believe, and, uh, they're in close communication. This is part of what we would propose is that people are being made aware of how to manage their uh, septic systems and, uh, so that we can have a healthy, healthy system. Uh, we're not, th- this program is not about making everybody sign up for South Side Sewer. And we don't have that capacity anyway. We're not, we're not selling sewer system. What we're selling is the idea of preserving our groundwater pool. So the last.
Is that one of the answers though? I mean, isn't, isn't more sewer districts the answer to a lot of this?
Yes.
Cause I mean, the area I'm from is Priest Lake. Priest Lake has quite a few.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
And you got great water quality.
And, and the goal there was to protect the lake and protect water quality.
Yeah.
Uh, so it seems to me that that's really kind of where things should move.
I, I think that's, I, I think it's preferable. Um, you know, when you look at Sagal, uh, itself, the area that's in that overlay, there are people there who I, I believe are probably just barely in subsistence living along with very wealthy people. We have both ends of the economic spectrum. So I think that, um, posing a sewer system needs communication in, in e- education, how we would communicate that because you can't, you can't force somebody who's barely, you know, there'd have to be some subsidizing of, of people in low income categories so that it wouldn't be an undue burden. Uh, whereas there are some people who could afford a lot of sewers. You know, there, it's like, thanks, Bill Gates, you moved in my neighborhood and blew up my economic average income model because we do have very wealthy people. We have a few very wealthy people in that district that can blow up our income models. So there, there's a socioeconomic angle to the septic. If I think about it just from a, a, a sewer, sewer environmental perspective, you know, there's, there's land in, uh, open that we could use for applied, you know, like we do. Bottle Bay, that, that whole area is on, on sewer system. So is Garfield, you know, so is Hope. Uh, you know, it's just the San Point is putting wastewater in the lake. That's in Dover.
I have a question for you, Jack.
Yeah. So how does, how's it work? Cause obviously you're familiar with your own application bonds and things like that.
Yeah.
That's within that, I think, ten year, seventeen year time of pill. So things like that are permitted and allowed? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, there's still ways for us to manage our wastewater, um, that, and, and I, I feel like we can't just, you know, I was looking at a, um, a huge development down in Valley County where they wanted to put in, I think it was three thousand homes, a billionaire in Texas wants to put in all these homes and they want, they want all of them to be on septic. And that, that just is, um, I don't think that's, that's something we want in the state. So moving towards community water systems is a benefit because there's greater monitoring. But again, that's from an environmental health perspective and not.
So if you're in a community water system, then that's, that's figured out in that index too as far as weights. So that even just being on a community water system, public water system.
Yeah. Well, I, I think about, sorry, did you have?
No.
Well, so when, when I was in, or I, I met Jake, I was talking to, um, Milton uh, about some business and he, he noted the community water system in Coca Lala. Uh, they were at nine, they went to ten. And then they had to measure their groundwater and they found out that they'd been drinking a hundred and fifty parts per million of uranium. Cause there are fourteen uranium mines in, in the county, right? So you cannot assume it, the water coming out of a well is good. I mean, there's arsenic or all, all those things are, are known things because of how our faulting system works in geology that you don't know what you're getting. So community water system requires that those measurements to be done. And when that, you know, it's pretty cheap. At, at the end of the day to know that that's going on, right? That, that assessment's being made. So.
Back when De Schmidt did his work, um, it was where the water's going, definitely, but there was a water quality component of that. Has that been maintained with those wells or other wells? So that is, has it shown since he did that in the, whatever that was?
Yeah.
That has been degradation of the quality?
Um, no, well, and actually in the first slide, I, or in the video, the water quality that's coming out of the South Side well that we just dropped would show that we haven't really had any degradation.
And that's. That's what we've been told by, by DEQ and Panhandle.
Mm-hmm.
That there's no evidence that there's degradation because of the elevation of the water and the media that has to go through the soil. The soil maps show six or eight feet of soil. That's all. They don't go down twenty, thirty, forty feet. The soil maps show six or eight feet of soil. That's all. They don't go down twenty, thirty, forty feet. And you go beyond that and that's from excavation. The well logs show what you're going through to get there.
Right.
And all of that shows that the media that's there is good for reducing contaminants from septic system.
I've never, so I I could, I can speak to what's happened after the cement. A guy named Miller did a a technical publication. That I asked Kermit to update. Uh, and so he did that work in two thousand eight. So the cement was in eighty-three. Miller did it in two thousand eight eight and then uh, we asked Kermit to u- update that when he was at DQ. And he agreed and there, I think that's on their plan is to update that same study that was done in two thousand eight. Cause it's a great piece of work.
Yeah, it should be on.
Yeah, exactly.
That's.
And and that's frankly, if that work would in this program is exactly what we're talking about is making it a living program instead of. Once every uh, what, twenty, twenty years, what can happen, right? You know, the Conoco gas station pops a li- a leak and you know, we're drinking gas.
Let me, let me speak to that, Jack.
Not not to be uh, sensational, but that is the reality. Yeah.
Let me, let me speak a little bit to that. Uh, I talked with uh, with Anna in Anna Moody with uh. In uh, Corlaine office and uh, and Seth and some of the other folks from uh. You know, from tech services and DQ and a year or so ago, no, actually must have been about three years ago. I forget how long I've been retired. About three years ago, uh, Seth and Scott Miller were trying to do a a sampling. In the, in this particular area, but their difficulty was finding willing participants because Scott from Boise was making phone calls. Uh, what Anna indicated to to us and Seth indicated to us is uh. You know, if uh, to de- if to develop some local interest and local partnership. To uh, to arrive at some some wells to sample, DQ can include that as a monitor, regional monitoring network. The basis of information that we have for the Sago Valley area is about six IDWR. Statewide program monitoring wells that are right in the middle of Sago and that's about the only place they are. So. Water quality may seem pretty good, but there's a very poor distribution of sample sites. And so what that means is there's the potential that things are happening that we're unaware of. A proposal for uh, for a public uh, public sampling event that uh. That would include uh, a number of uh, well, maybe forty, fifty participants based on a public invitation to participate. I think would uh, would allow a good distribution of information and we'd at least know. Nitrate levels and chloride and sulfate and other things that might be an in- indicator. And then from that, uh, DQ and Corlaine indicated they could uh, they could pick up. Uh, ten to fifteen wells and establish a regional monitoring network. So part of, part of the. The outcome from vulnerability index is to indicate where we need to collect more sampling monitoring data. So realize there's many ways to use the outcome of this index. One of it is to figure out where we don't know what's going on or what we can understand or what we haven't assessed yet. And that gives the opportunity to move on and answer questions and gain a confidence in the information uh, the index is telling us.
Uh, we'll go on to the final slide here. Um, in summary, what are we asking for? This is uh, these are the points that we feel are important and and Flint just his point. That he just made about working with DQ. What we're asking for is uh, for a technical committee to help develop. Uh, this index. Um, and so we, these are, we know all the agencies. We've already talked to them. Uh, you know, we would talk and and work out the 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 data. What's the best data to nail this? The the things that Eric, like you, you brought up about, well, look, you know, we know there's no five foot well. So what's the right? Point for the flow of the data here. And we do some level of development with these agencies and along with. Uh, we would love to meet with Bonner County GIS on the, on the automating part of this as well. Because again, this, the idea of being able to play this back and forth between years is uh, something that we think is very important from a planning perspective. So not only are we talking about today, but being able to project, you know, what 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 do we actually see coming down? Pike if there's more, um, if land use changes or other inputs change, um, how how would that map out on the system? So uh, there's also a review of the formula. We've already, we we have this. This uh, Flint uh, net, but all all the the formula and the agency, we can't really do this on our own. You know, we we need the, we need this to be for somebody. Can't be just for Jack and Flint. You know, we need it to be for the county, the purpose of the county. This doesn't mean that the county technically is compelled to do anything. You you know, it's just the first step of how do we take this forward or something like this forward. Uh, and then come up with something that we can present that's more than, although what we're showing is using real data on real logic. But with real computer system, we need the right data to go back in that system. So it's a holistic system. So, you know, we've made this look very real, but it and it is to the extent that it makes sense at the level of approval that we have, right? So this is just the work of, you know, a few of us to do this. Um, and and that's what the purpose of the technical programming is. Then the last thing, last two things, um, is really kind of just, you know, taking a look at the water protection code. I didn't even know it existed. Um, I don't know why I've looked at water county code. I guess it's probably be because of being associated with Southside. I did, I was not aware it was there until they. Pointed it out. It was like, holy cow, couldn't believe it was here, you know? Sitting there since two thousand eight, I had no idea. Uh, and so uh, that's probably something I ought to get looked at. You know, a little further down the road. And then the last thing is. This is a pretty, this is a technical. We're 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 taking all the science and putting into technical terms and we need, need to meet with GIS. Cause we, we know that they would know how to do this. But but on the other hand, we just don't want to drop it in their lap. So we want to work with them and uh, the idea of this meeting would give. The some of our ability to work within some level of why are you meeting with us instead of two guys off the street? You know, that that's, that's what we're at. No, thank you. Any, any final questions?
I think the GIS department in the county is is quite good. Uh, they're really good. So yeah, I would encourage that.
Yeah.
I I have the it it. Kind of going forward. Is this expandable to the whole county? I mean, we'll look at the different.
Yes.
Cause that would be obviously very important. Make it keep expandable to all the different areas. And then um, just from a, from my simple minded approach here, um. You know, in terms of quality, we're looking at quality and we're looking at quantity of water. So under the quality, the way that, you know, we've kind of dealt with. Quality issue is to restrict the size of a residential lot that can have a septic system. Um, and then, you know, from that point on, we kind of rely on Panhandle Health because they're the experts. To find out whether it's possible to have one and how it would look like and all that. We're not out, we're out of that. So basically, we look at the size of a lot um, in terms of residential, uh, that would take a septic. The other thing we can do from a planning standpoint is we can, we can restrict uses on property, you know, we. Can be residential or it can be commercial or it can be industrial, something like that, right? And we can, we can restrict that. So. If this, this would lead into, if this overlay system would lead into that kind of decision making, that would be helpful. From a uh, from a quantity standpoint, we, we could ask that question quite a bit, you know, is, well, you know, is there going to be water there?
Right.
And. We don't know, right? Uh, I mean, unless somebody drills a well, we don't know. So, I mean, if if this house somehow generates. It leaves some estimation of whether that's, you know, the the quantity of waters there. We get a lot of references to, well, you know, it's just like the Rathbone Prairie. Aquifer, you know, it should be restricted to five acres or whatever. Um, we, you know, we, we are assuming that that's not an issue yet. In this county.
Right.
But we don't know. So that kind of information, if it comes out of this study, would be really helpful too.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, I I find the fact that the well that we drilled. We, we could not measure its total in uh, capacity. We, because the well driller couldn't what, measure. Past fourteen hundred gallons per minute. So it was still going strong at fourteen hundred.
Right down in Murphy Bay where the regular, where the rest of site is.
No, it's right next to our sister in wealth. It, I call it, I think we hit the east fork of the Sago River. Rivers can be underground. I think we hit the east fork of the Sago River. There is no Sago River, of course, but we just happened to hit. An amazing well and I don't, I can't tell you how it's, it is still flowing just like it does in the spring. It's not dropping at all, right? If you go down and look at the Artesian well on Southside's property and how that flows. There's toe degradation seasonally by that. So where's that coming from? I don't know. There's, I don't think anybody knows, honestly, into a puddle. And and that's what I think is worth studying. I I I feel that was kind of the purpose of going to Kermit to say, hey, look, we should really understand what's, what we got here. Uh, if if in fact, we have that capacity, Cabinet Mountain has two six hundred gallon wells that um. Supply about three quarters of the of Boundary County. So the possibility here is, and I'm not here to sell that well. But but what I'm saying is that could be a regional for the Sago to go down Doofert. You know, there's water quality problems down Doofert. Look, for example, that system, we could have the capacity to do that. You know, but it's contingent on preserving that fantastic quality. Everything's a non-detect. Except we have a little calcium, a little fluoride, you know, little things you want and none of the things we don't want.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation. Very interesting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um. Well, we, you know, the next item is uh. I think we're not going to do the next item, which is pending ordinance changes. Well, well. Didn't we decide we weren't going to do that?
So this, this item here was listed as an action item. So the the planning commission could take action on this. So you were presented, I'm surprised you took out. A lot of information from these subject matter experts. Like I said, uh, previously, I've been meeting with them monthly for the last six months or so. And what they're requesting is a subcommittee uh, for source water protection, wellhead protection. So. I think what they want to do is have more authority to go to these outside agencies, meet with them and then gather the data, build this product. Presented to you guys in the future for some kind of adoption, or some of the guys, uh, for uh, some kind of.
So, so what would that, what would that look like? I mean, if we say, yeah, we'd like to say, we we think a subcommittee would be great. Um, is that a recommendation to the board or?
No, actually by the loop, but you can.
Shall we have the authority to? Offer GIS services? Cause that's effectively what he's asking for among other things.
Yeah, I, I think it's, if it goes into some kind of ordinance change, which is unlikely, the end result of this is some kind of change that we're facing. And all of these would be called public officials or point to officials.
Ordinance or budget. Yeah, those are the two restrictions that we have that we have had no control, but we have full authority to. Reach out. Into the world and select data and get reports and hire specialists and so.
So we could certainly put together this, this subcommittee potentially.
Yep.
Uh, that would give them a little bit more clout to go gather more data. It would also maybe give them the thought to go talk with GIS department and see what it might take to go to the next step.
Yep.
And then if out of that, the GIS came back and said, gee, it's going to take X number of dollars or man hours or something like that for us to do, we. It's just not something we can wing based on our current budget, then that might be something come back to. The BOCC then I guess to say, okay, yeah, we want to fund this additional. Whatever it is.
Exactly.
So if we, so if somebody makes a motion to uh, create a subcommittee for what, for source water protection and wellhead protection. But then, um, then what?
Then my question would be, how do we want to seat that? You know, how many seats do you want? And then who do you want seated? You want to open it up for anyone to apply for? Do you want staff to reach out specifically to, say, water purveyors throughout the county? And invite them to to see if they want to be part, party two or part of this.
I think it should be a technical committee.
Right, yeah.
Shouldn't be, yeah, should, should be people who are knowledgeable in the area and and, you know, have. Some. Expertise.
I agree. Cause any model you do without with bad data is. Is kind of.
So I don't know. I mean, I don't know who he would even, I guess we can create the subcommittee and let somebody else. Cause hide who's on it? I don't know.
Sure. It's our subcommittee, we have to decide.
My thought was to reach out to the other water service providers throughout the state or throughout the, the county and see if anybody else wants to participate.
I mean, there's, there's water service providers, but there's also uh. Sciences, science, geotechnical guys that are out there. That are connected with water services, but generally this company that are dependent. And there's some right here in the county, there's some Cooper County, uh, I just used one last fall. You know, like you said, uh, hydrogeologist, so he knows substrati, knows the set. People like that. That's what, they're going to be. Rightfully very critical about the data and how it's used and because this whole thing is going to come down to the sensitivity of that data. So that you're not. Color it with a broad brush. That's what I'm saying, those order section, it's all the same in that quarter section. And I don't think so.
So how do we find those people, Doc, to?
Well.
You reach out to them.
Yeah.
Well.
Google.
It's something that this, that this commission should do. I mean, we're, we're pretty much a lame duck commission at this point. So. Maybe we just keep this down the road to whatever the new commission is.
We could add it as an action item for first meeting in October.
What, what, make it a second one, one, one night. Question of the subcommittee, are we allowed to invite only or do we have to make it open? An application?
It's, I think by loser, it states that you can appoint subcommittees. So um, if, I think if it's a technical committee, which is kind of what he first presented. Um, I would think it would be similar to how it adds to the APA to add protection area. Um, which is, you know, these types of professionals, right? We want this type of person to be on this subcommittee to give us this type of input.
For instance, I mean, the commission did. Uh, put in place those subcommittees that we have for the planning of that, that those were subcommittees of this.
Your commission, geographic area.
So and we just had interviews with interested people. And maybe one thing we didn't do very well was assign a commission member to each of those. We talked about it, but we volunteered. Yeah, anyway.
How about if we do this? Could we maybe think that we all generally agree with the concept of moving forward? Uh, while we wait for the next session to formally begin. Perhaps maybe Jake, someone you, you or your staff could reach out to the other water agencies, as you call them. Maybe even DQ, IDWR, whomever else, and just start seeing about getting a pool together of. Likely technical experts that we could then draw from so that in October, when we get together. We might already have that pool established rather than starting from scratch at that point.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So if I'm understanding you as right, you want more of a technical expertise, some, some water district personnel, maybe managers of water districts or whatnot. I think I have a pretty good email, email pool for that. And then state agencies such as IDWR and DQ that would have some.
And if there are any local technical experts in that field who aren't connected with the.
Sure.
With the water districts who are interested in spending some of their time.
Give me some free time.
Yeah, right.
We can, we can invite PhD.
Septic, so. So one thing, I I haven't read the ordinance for quite a while, but not many years. Uh, but I can't recall. The, at the end, the picture here, what's happening? What's it going to do? What's it going to do for or to land use decisions? Uh, you know, here, we just got through with the land use component. We got through with water, with the natural resources. Uh, one word. Well, Jack did talk with us one time about this issue. But it didn't go anywhere from the agencies that are overseeing these things. Yeah, so I'm I'm a little. You know, as far as putting together a committee, who from the recipient side, could, should we think about inviting?
Well, I think, I think uh, this is the way I would look at it. I I I'd say, let's, let's get the technical people. Together and see if they can come up with some data that's usable from a criminal land use standpoint. And then when, then the, the planning commission at that time could figure out what to do with it, but uh.
Do the. Do the labor.
But I tell you, I tell you. Me ask, those are the questions I asked.
Yeah.
Right. So what's the, you know, this is, this is what we, this is what we can deal with.
Right.
So and how's it going to be helpful for us? So ultimately, it's going to come to what effect, and that's the thing is that they're looking at something that's going to somehow. Restrict or condition land use to help the situation, not what they are. So. Who knows?
I think it would also be really beneficial to appoint one member of the planning commission to this, I mean, to keep it very much. They don't, they don't get too far off of the land use trail, right?
I think.
You know, from from the experience. I think. One other mistake that was made or oversight was they were kicked off without a schedule. So they were left to run open loop. For a long time, and that that became a sore place, because it took a long time.
Yeah.
At the beginning, I think it would have been helpful.
You know, you could put something in the beginning saying, like, every two months, we want to report back at one of the planning commission rules.
Firstly, I think if you're, if you're asking for that, yeah, I think you need to define what it is you want them to do. So they have to be working towards providing a product to the planning commission, so this is our report. And I think you need to give them a timeframe to do that, which should give them a timeframe, do that now. You know, maybe that. You want to get those people here first and have a discussion about what's a reasonable timeframe. But that doesn't do any good to tell them you want it in a month, and they come back and say, oh, this is a year long project, but. But but establish a timeline upfront that they're working towards.
Yeah, I think they can do that. I mean, obviously, they've given them.
And they're gonna be key to this whole thing, but. Bringing more people in with this.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I mean, just to put on the agenda for October. So now, what do we want to do today? Um, I I I think we decided last time that we weren't gonna deal with the Title Twelve. Changes because of that, the board hasn't. Approval land use to go on, so. So I guess we could go to the glossary of terms, although. I saw that, you know, there's a, there there's a tremendous number of definitions in chapter eight. There is, I mean.
Yeah.
There's a lot that aren't.
Well, excessive slopes. Thirty percent or more, I don't know. High density, what's low density? Low density is lower than high density.
So what's urban? I mentioned the thirty percent slopes they could chief armed on recently, because we, our rule says. The IFC says no more than. Ten percent. And we draw a line at nine because we've gone up past the ten and it's a no vote. So it's things like that. A myriad of those kinds of things are simply are not addressed. Necessary, if those of you who remember that argument. There's a million terms that. That get used that aren't.
Well, we can go through this. You want to guys, you guys want to go through this list?
Just this list?
Well, you have another list.
But no, I just. I'm just testing the question.
Yeah, it was on the, it's on the drive, I mean.
Yeah, it's on the drive. There's a folder I created called glossary, Jacob, if you don't mind. Under comp plan, I'll leave glossary and I saved your list of terms there. Things we talked about before, which is the APA dictionary.
Yeah.
I thought we're gonna make this formal glossary, there might be some things we want to establish as kind of a framework. For example. We don't want to come up with a dictionary that's probably different than. Legal term in Idaho code, if even federal code. So I was gonna, you know, and and this may not affect what words we use or what definitions we use specifically, but. Maybe we agree on the general framework for what we want to set this thing up to look like. Um, and like I said, maybe we start with, okay, look, there's a federal term for excessive slopes. Let's use that one. If there's a state code or a state definite excessive slopes, we use that one. If not, go to APA and see if they've got a definition, and then we use that one.
You know, everything we've done is, you know, with with some stuff, that's always been greater.
Yeah, I'm just using that as an example, I'm not saying suggesting, but I'm just. A good term, whatever term.
Yeah.
We we want to, because the framework wants us. Be set up in such a manner, I guess, is what I was talking about.
This thirty percent doesn't do it for me. Right? Is it, is it that one square foot of? My ten acre parcel, that's thirty percent, or does it have to be greater than fifty percent of it, or exactly one? Whether I have.
I've been thinking about this a lot, too, because that whole term characterized by.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, did we actually use the term excessive slopes? Anywhere in the complex?
It out, somebody, somebody found it.
He put together the most, the majority of this list, and then some additional ones were added to the bottom after, during the land use component, or sorry. The implementation component.
Yeah, he he said the other day that these are words that he found in the work that we've done, either in the in the policies. I think he just learned it to policies, I'll take you back into the text of. But even then, that's what my comment that day was. All right, if these are in in the. Wherever they occur, they need to be addressed the same. Was it the text of the document, was it zoning code, whether they're in the implementation component? It it's gonna get the same treatment everybody. So sure, sure. So that was, that was, I don't, I don't know that I made a comment the other day, but. If they're found in the code, the definition should be in the code. So we don't end up chasing a tail, changing things every time somebody sneezes. And why just attack these one by one?
Yeah, okay, just say, so high density, I'm not sure why we needed to find out, but okay, high density, if you do it from a lot, from a lot standpoint, I'd say. High density is anything that's two and a half acres or less. That's pretty consistent with what we've done in terms of. Of defining, you know, suburban and all the other stuff.
Well, then higher density would be what? Well, then, yeah, why is it?
I don't, higher density is, that's, that's. I I would, I was, I'm gonna say ridiculous, but. Higher density is, I don't know what that means.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna use a law, you know. Acres is. You know, min- minimums. I I would imagine the highest test we got was ten thousand square foot.
Right, but but if the high density would be, maybe just to me.
Anything two and a half.
Two and a half acres or less.
Okay, so there is no higher.
So, yeah, anything, it would be higher.
Where your term was used, that it came out higher than high. Lower than low. It's just a, it sounds like a good country song, grammatical.
So low density would be anything greater than two and a half acres, I guess, or. Five acres or more.
Five acres or more with the cutoff at five, five. And it's.
You have to, you have to go, you can't leave a gap there, you can't say two and a half acres or less than five acres.
More than, okay, more than two and a half acres.
What if it's exactly two?
Two point is the old two point.
If it's less than one acre, you can have one, if it's more than one acre, you can have two, but it's exactly.
That's a different.
So it's two and a half or less. Than more than two and a half.
Greater than or equal to, and greater than.
And some of these, you know, I I. In my mind, begs the question, if if we actually did use the term higher density somewhere, do we need to go back and review that? Fix it to say high density? Is that what, I mean.
He found it, so it's in, it's in there.
It's really in there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a relative term, so.
It is a relative term, but I don't, I I I question whether we actually were talking about. Two different ranges of high density at some point, high density and higher density. My guess is we used higher density at some point without really thinking about it. And 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 we, what we really could have said was high density and define the term as. Two and a half acres or or less.
Without seeing where we use that term.
Yeah.
I don't know, but you know, it could be that we were talking about. Where, where. In a, in a particular zone, let's say suburban. Where you have. Uh, sewer and water. You, I'd say higher density than two and a half acres. So we could have used it in that sense, but to me, the context defines the term, I mean. I mean, seriously, guys, I mean, really? I mean, we should, what do you want us to define may, should, shall, and required?
Yeah.
Are you kidding?
One particular.
Well, I mean, seriously?
Well, actually, we have.
Did you take English?
It's already in the code, it's in the code injector.
So.
No, I don't think I did take it, actually. That's the other part.
So adverse impacts. That's something that's negative, I don't know.
It can be a very, I don't think you can write that personally. I mean, adverse impacts was.
Something nobody likes, or the neighbor doesn't like.
Something the neighbor, no, that'll go well. Define neighbor to get over, yeah, go over the fence, it comes back at you.
All right, let's skip it, adverse impacts. Okay, sanitary sanitary service, I thought we 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 went through this, I mean. Sanitary services means. Water supply, sewage disposal, solid waste disposal, and other services necessary to maintain generally accepted standards of personal hygiene and public health. That is a definition of sanitary services.
You know where they keep coming?
I don't know. Yes, it came from thirty-three USC, twelve sixty-three G.
There we go, well, that's about as high as you go. Right there.
I don't know why, I mean, it's, I mean. I I I'm gonna get a lot of trouble, I should, I should just shut up. This is just, this is a ridiculous exercise.
Yeah.
These are terms that are used all the time.
And they've been known for years.
Is it possible that instead of having need for glossary, maybe they're highlighting a need to go back and be more articulate and where we used?
Well, if somebody wants to go back and rewrite the comp plan, then do that.
Yeah.
We're not gonna do it, I, well, I'm not gonna do it. All right, excessive slope, that's, okay, we're not doing that. Public services. Services provided to the public.
Services provided by a public entity.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Private services, I I don't know what those are.
Well, public services. Public services to me in the context of the top thing is fire. Uh, law enforcement, and yeah, that's.
Roads.
Roads. Chair.
I don't think of roads as a service. Uh, hopefully, we're not going to that model. I think of roads as infrastructure. Just.
But it's a, it's a service the county provides.
Serving, this, this, the county provides the infrastructure.
Right.
And they provide a service of maintaining. That infrastructure.
Does you remember?
But that service is not, the infrastructure is there for the public to use.
Okay, well, that wants to define infrastructure, too, so.
Well, I I think, Bob, I agree with you, I think public services, fire. Police CNS, that's pretty much what it means in every context. So public services.
So private services, I I I. Something that's not public, I guess.
I would, I'm I'm, I'm sort of flabbergasted that we use that term somewhere.
I don't think we did.
But, because I don't know what we would have been talking about, maybe we, maybe we did, I don't know.
Well, well, okay.
We've been working on this for a long time.
For instance, the community water system. That's not a public system. It hasn't got the the users. But it's a private system.
We would have said private system.
Yeah. That's a private system. Private service.
Maybe we do it, maybe we said, yeah, private services, I don't, I don't know what that.
I know, but.
That goes to your point, I would need, I wouldn't even see the context.
So urban services is defined in the, in chapter eight. We gotta change it?
It's defined, but it's it's lacking, I forget what it is, but there's a. There's wiggle room in there for for, I forget if it's urban water or rural. That's, a lot of this, a lot of this is coming from. This will, the need for this will diminish when the code gets tightened up. And when. And then a lot of it comes from land use decisions that have been made where people are able to wind and twist the meaning of something in order to get what they want. And when the code eventually gets tightened up. There won't be so much need. But that's where. That's where a lot of it's stemming from. Are we carrying, that's a, that's a word. For my sure, so it is currently in in twelve eight.
So. I don't think you can, well. It's somewhat problematic to adopt chapter eight as the comp plan definitions as well. Because every time you then modify chapter eight, you have to do, it's it's modifying how. Well, how the comp plan is being defined. Right, so the comp plan is a, it's a foundational document that should have its own definitions. If we want to copy paste some of those definitions out of chapter, sure. But if you just put a statement here saying all of chapter eight. Um, definitions are hereby adopted as as comprehensive plan definitions as well. I can see that being problematic is to modify those definitions over time.
But shouldn't they be, should they be consistent? I mean, to me. See how, you have. You know, one set of definitions for the code and one set of definition for the complant, that's, that doesn't seem right. Should be the same.
Well, some of these are gonna be broader in nature, right, than what we're gonna have, something very specifically defined in the.
So that's always gonna be the test, a broad definition in the comp plan, broad understanding, broad meaning. Tightened up in code.
I think it's, it's also, don't look at the code as to how we define it today, we could define it in a different way, though, it would be totally change. So big urban services, like, it has been problem, I wouldn't say problematic, it's been frustrating uh from the past as. Mr. Boney mentioned. Um, some land use decisions that they made that kind of say this is how it's been defined, at least how it is defined. And also the code, the. We have. Kind of some. Rub between how chapter six, you know, six two three defines what urban services are. Uh, in context of urban water versus what chapter eight calls permanent services, so.
Good, I I mean, I, to me, I think we should start with urban water and urban sewer, and then urban services is. Whatever combination of those two we want it to be. Um, I think part, I think part of the issue is, is one or the other. In the code. This is the way it's been interpreted, urban services, also is one, it's either urban water. And or urban sewer.
Well, it's just publicly or privately maintained water supply and distribution system, which is, it means. I mean, if you want to really, it means if you put a pipe or two valve in it. If somebody wants to take it to that level versus having it clearly defined.
So, so. I think we, for urban water. Maybe for both water and sewer, I think we should relate them back to. And I forget the numbers, but the number of users, which need to becomes the permitting agency.
In excess of nine service connections and and for twenty-five people for more than sixty days.
Right.
Right, right.
Or if DEQ is a permitting agency, then I would say that's urban water, or. If it's smaller than that, then I would say it's not.
It's, it could be private, so, um. I spent a lot of time on the phone calls between IDWR, Penn, all health here, this last well, month and a half. As of July first, they got on hand change a lot of the way IDWR did, and then completely. You want perch, Penn, I'll hope, pumped on those bricks pretty hard, said, oh, wow, we don't have to do it that way. And so, and I don't have it in front of me right now. But basically, what I'm saying is, if there's a difference that the hookups, the the nine service connections for twenty-five people more than X amount of days. It can be a private water system. If it serves two or more.
Yeah, I I was recently talking about this, if you own ten lots and there's a well for every two lots.
Yeah.
That's a public water system. It could be five wells, each serving two lots, but it could, because it's under one ownership when it gets. So. I don't know how we will catch that, because we we look at a single water source, providing to ten different lots, right, and that. Historically, that's been easy one to catch, but there, they've reinterpreted this idea possible to say. Now, once it's under one ownership, regardless of the number of wells, once you hit ten. We're considering, and it's serving more than one lot each. And how it works, or public part, some of them should be, should be that regular. So. So I think rather than try to copy their definition, I think referring to systems that are regulated by an Idaho agency such as.
So that would be a. Urban water, that would, that would be a, a public urban water. What what about? It says publicly or privately maintained water supply.
Isn't it intended to be that it's? Being. On, that it's a safe water, so it's been determined to be safe for. Public users, we, isn't that really the intent of urban water?
Well, then maybe we should define urban water. Urban public water system. And private water system. Because private water systems don't have to be great.
Well, like. Open water would be, and third, be public or not. I think, isn't, that's what I've always thought the intent.
Because along with that, when you, when you class this as public water system, there's testing required. That's the difference. Uh, yes, the numbers and all that, the testing is required in a public where it's not, even like a community, that's what Jack was saying, a community water system. You don't have the testing, when I flip the number up to a public water system, then they test it, whoa, you think you're ending.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so. Right now. Well, bay twenty-one has the urban services definition, it says public and privately, David.
Well, if you go to six two three, it talks about those two of us, just a six two, so if you're creating. Six two three, you know, once. If you're creating, you know, via land division, multiple lots are inserted by. By a, a water system, so tells you what you need to do. Um, and how you need to, what, what, what standards you need to meet to create those lots. Like I said, there's a little bit of rub between how the definition reads, it's kind of more vague, and then chapter six is a little more specific.
It's also a place for the A P A, that's very, very detailed, so. I don't know that it's appropriate for.
Urban services actually is public or privately maintained water supply and distribution. Systems, sewage collection, treatment, and disposal systems. Not to include individual septic. Or drain field systems of community, or support community septic systems. And, and drain field systems. Unless subject to an approved sewer management agreement.
So that kind of, so it kind of, does, it kind of says public or private, and then kind of goes the other way.
I think what it's getting to is when it's regulated by a state source, right, so. L S A Ss are, are regulated through the sewer management agreement, that goes through P H D D Q. Public water systems regulated by D D Q, get regularly tested and monitored, when they don't, D D Q comes out there, so. If, if the idea is. When a well goes bad, how many people is, how many people are gonna get sick? Right? Or if a sewer system is gonna default and go bad, how many people are affected, if it's on an individual lot, it's, it's affecting an individual, their family.
So, I, so I'm not sure, what, why, why can't we use? Just their definition of urban water. Nine lot, nine, nine, nine service connections or twenty-five people, because. Well, um. That recently changed to that. So, either citing exactly what they had, or citing. Both C D Q for, or.
Yes, we could, we could say. Water systems that are regulated by D Q. And that way, if they change their criteria, we don't have to change.
Criteria, then I think the answer would, then, then the question would come back to us saying. Well, go find out, that's up to them, that's, that's their due diligence, let them go find out.
Alright, that's time to make, so what about our, our, our sewer?
Same thing, I mean, this, this says it in much more detail than the water, that was the whole.
So how about regulated?
Well, what you just read, under.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, it should be pub- public. I'm not sure why they're privately in there, so.
Just to make a distinction, I guess. See, it says include roads. And hard surface roads constructed to standard set forth in title two, urban services. When, when, a couple of workshops in here, when the road bridge. I address them as a service provider. Did I consider that they are?
We lose Matt?
For a minute. Gonna give us old folks some time to get rid of alcohol.
Well, what do we want to do about urban water? Publicly regulated. Sewer septic systems, I, I guess sewer systems?
Yeah, is there not?
Is it just an urban sewer, so it's publicly regulated sewer systems?
Yeah, there's no private.
There's no private sewer system. So then, urban services with the. Uh, urban and, and urban water and sewer. Is that right? That what you're saying?
The definition does apply, it does includes.
I'll put the definition on the screen over there, that's.
Electric power and telephone and hard surface roads.
Okay, we had that.
We, we wanna get rid of privately, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we're defining it as, as urban services are, is urban water and sewer.
I, I don't know about if you heard privately maintained, because like I said, that. The whole thing, uh.
Why isn't just urban water and sewer as we've just defined it?
Because that would, that would eliminate septic altogether, even if they're the community system. Is that we wanna do that? I mean, that's fine, I don't know.
Urban water and urban.
Well, I don't know about that, because. So we're not changing the, this definition to code, this is strictly gonna be glossary for the comp plan?
This is a.
Yeah.
Electric power, and add electric power and telephone utilities and hard surface roads constructed to the standard set forth in top two.
I, I just realized. They just put all of the county roads that have asphalt on them in, in an urban setting. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's why I don't think we should touch roads, urban services. Okay, because I'm not sure any of our roads are urban roads.
Well, I can craft it in a way where it says when all of these things are present, that is urban services, not when one of these things is present.
Yeah, that's the other thing, right, well, except for in code, if you have urban. Urban water or urban sewer. Then you get a density bonus there, so I don't know if you have to have them all. So we might have to keep some.
I know, we. Redesignated some areas based on the bounds of a water district or a sewer district on the land, but. I don't think it was considered that if it was just a water district, that should not be suburban zone. You guys recall. So if you, if you switch now, it's gonna lead towards map changes.
A, a note besides, beside, uh. Twelve day twenty-one. To get roads out of there, out of urban services. Even electric, electric power, you tell me, tell me, that's an urban thing?
So we want an urban water or urban sewer?
When power came into this county, it was under the rural electrification program. Under the New Deal. Rural, not urban. Back to the fifties.
Don't leave it just or, if you're gonna make that change, make it an and slash or, so. Then somebody will come up and say, oh, well.
You have both the snog.
Yeah, definitely.
You have both there for your rule.
I still like, I still like the idea of having public or private systems in there.
Well, but if you go to. Isn't the place to fix that then, in? Urban water or urban sewer? I mean, just, just because they're regulated by D E Q doesn't mean they can't be private, right?
Right. No, if they're regulated by D E Q, then they're a public system. But, but it, it's coming down to whose service, individual. Well, on an individual lot, septic, or is it serving more than one lot?
Right, that's.
Serving more to residents.
Right, that was the key, so.
And if it's. Even then. If. Hard to call that, I'd hate to call that urban, well, we don't, we discussed this before.
So Matt, if I understand correctly, correctly from, your advocating is that when you have. Say, a five acre piece, you want, you still want it to be able to be split into five, one acre lots with a shared well that's not regulated by. D Q or anybody else.
So you, you, so you have. Uh, fifteen acres.
Sure.
And you wanna create five parcels. And you can go down to two and a half acres. If it's on a shared well. Shared waters is. You don't have to spread.
So right now, you can do two and a half acres with, without sharing any service.
Okay. Then one acre, I see what you're saying, with five acres now, right? Right, because a lot of people out there. Um, we have seen this over the last several years. Relying on it, and now if we're gonna, if we're gonna go ahead and move the goalposts. I.
Move the goalposts to what?
Different definition. So someone out there bought piece of property. Think that they're gonna go ahead and do a short subdivision. And they're gonna have, well, be allowed that density of one acre parcels, because it's going to be a, a, uh, private water system. With your honor to five different parcels, share, share well, from a shared well, which meets the code.
I don't think so, but what, what, and what, what zoning district would you, would they allow one acre lots?
Yeah.
That's that urban water or sewer.
No, suburban zone does not have to have.
Down to one acre it does.
You, you can have a shared well, go to one acre.
Is that correct, Jake? You can.
That's the rub between this definition.
Right. This has to be where the urban-like definition came in. It had to, well, to, to, to say, no, it's not urban. Urban has connotations. Bad connotations.
So. The way six two three reads is if you're gonna create. What less than. And again, it doesn't have to be how it maintains going forward, it's just how it was written.
Right, exact. Six two three. Our services. Those lots are smaller than one acre. Close of any ingress he grids.
Chapter four sets out the densities. Right, and it says, uh. Urban water. So. Urban services as defined here, lots and conservation subdivisions, and water supply shall be provided to release all of the following services. Lots be served by individual well and septic. New. Lots to be served by a new water system, serving two to nine lots. But here's. If you're having a new water system, two to nine lots, there's how it gets defined, right, so. Professional geologists or, uh, I don't have a license. Professional engineer, you get some documentation from them saying this capacity will be served.
But it does say you have any.
So if you had an existing water system, you couldn't do that? It has to be new?
Well, it would be.
I already discussed.
It would be a new water system, given that it was previously only serving one block. Right?
Because we're in the subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's, it's, yeah, you go back, where are we coming? And, and we, and we can, we can read to see why we've done this, it's in the housing component of our two thousand five. Well, it's actually an existing lease. Component, or existing plan. Our, most of our existing, so actually in a three point six housing. It spells this all out, and how we got to the spark. How it got to this, wherever you can, if you have a shared well, the whole reason with the shared well. Is you go ahead and allow one acre pieces, because you have to have wonderful separation between your wells, septic. It was more apt to go ahead and allow that separation, if, if you have a, a shared well.
Threaten forcing everybody to have.
Right, right.
And that's right, when you have urban sewer, um. Twenty thousand square foot lot size, because you can have individual wells without having a setback issue. Between the septic system, same. But it's like a half acre lot of.
Yeah, so that's the backdrop on why.
So when it says, there are density dimension tables. Suburban, urban water only one acre. That's, that means two. Two sharing a well is urban water. And. To avoid two to nine.
Yep.
Urban sewer only is twenty thousand.
And if it's a community system, an L S A S and urban water, it's still only one acre, so you can't create both those on the. On any, it has to be some kind of urban system.
But I don't, I don't think that my suggestion is gonna work about defining those in terms of. Whether they're regulated by D E Q. I think we're gonna have to be more specific about the definition of urban water and sewer.
If you wanna maintain this status quo and codify that better in definitions, then yeah. But if you wanna go to. You know, we're not gonna allow density on shared water systems, that it has to be regulated by D Q, you can craft that language. Do you wanna keep that up there, sorry?
Did you say beats, beats the standards of? Or what the two would require?
Well, so that, I think, even if it's not regulated, you've got for safety.
I need force.
Uh, well, we don't.
In theory.
But, but then if it's below their threshold. The D E Q doesn't have any standards, right?
Well.
That's the way.
Saying, but you use those same.
Yeah.
I think their standards are regular testing, they're just submitted to D D Q to ensure that the water is still safe.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So.
Right.
I don't think it's like a. X number of gallons per minute, and you know, so I think the standard they have is that regular testing.
Right? They wanna know that. Along the way, but it's, it comes down to testing for fall.
Where, where is the definition of urban water? You know, it's contained within that urban services definition, I believe, I don't think we have a specific.
No, it's not, it's not in that. It just says. It's, it's not, it wasn't definitely from urban, there is one. I don't think.
Because I would, I would have interpreted that. As I did, when I was talking to Matt. As something more than. A. I'm well serving two lots. I would, I would say that it has to be some sort of public related, public regulating system. I would, we are privately maintained water supply and distribution system, that, that's all it says, that's covered out of urban service, so. We don't have a definition of urban water outside of, what's in the six two three, which I just showed you, our definition of urban services, so.
If that even exclude an individual well serving an individual residence.
It's, it's just.
I mean, I have a well and a water distribution system on my property.
We do have a definition of uplift. Public utility facility, which is also really open and moves. Needs, needs to work. Uh, it does call back a little bit, or mostly, um.
So, so to define, to keep the definition the same. As what it is today, the way we've been interpreting it, you would say. Uh, water source and distribution system serving two or more. Residences or something. I don't know if we need to do properties or residences, what happens, I think your residences, and they're both on the same property, not.
A house and an eighty U served by.
Yeah, is that, is that now urban?
So I have a well on my. That services art. But it also connects to a nine unit condo. That published.
How was the condo created, raised?
How was it created?
Well, it created in nineteen seventy something.
I would consider that a non-conforming multifamily structure served by a public water system. Cause it's probably serving ten or more units and it shouldn't be regulated by DEQ.
We have.
Given what power was created, unless it never gets modified, they're not gonna set that.
We have a.
I'd be happy to shut them off.
We have a spring that serves three separate properties.
Yeah.
What is?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's, you definitely need to get IDQ improvement.
It does, that's the thing.
So, as I said, public utility facility, this kinda looks like it's copying some of that DEQ rules when it talks about. Kinda more residential dwelling units. Uh, design capacity of twenty five hundred gallons or more per day. But it also talks about telegraph stations, I'm sure we have some unregulated telegraph station about that. Um. Fire stations, it's just really, really broad, power substations are considered a public utility facility. So every time a power substation goes in, they're supposed to get a conditional use permit. Cause these are all CUPs. So, this is something that was raised by, I think I do this though. Uh, so everything about this, that we need to really refine this, cause it's just so broad. That we need to. Cut it down to what we actually want.
Okay, so, uh, here we're water, let's just define it the way it has been.
Right.
Let somebody change it, they wanna do it.
Urban sewer, we're gonna, we're gonna say, it's, it's gotta be, be public, we'd like it publicly regulated. And sewer system, there are no private, private services, sure. Urban sewer, urban sewer.
Isn't there a caveat in there unless there's a, uh, management agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, it refers to community subjects. Do, do, are there any examples of? Which you would consider to be a private sewer system that that's a. Management agreement place?
Yes. Yes, the, the new sewer systems that, uh, just came out, there's a. A plot that just count, I was talking to Catherine and Serb up this. It's called the Advantix. Sewer system. Which I tech, has treatment and everything else. It requires a manager. Have to hire someone.
Catherine's dealing with it. It's, it's underground, septic.
Yeah. Well, it, it, it is underground, but it requires a sewer management.
That's for individual.
Yeah.
Right, but that's not considered sewer system.
No, no, but if, if you, if you had multiple of these. You had two or three residents coming into one of these larger, cause they. Make this system quite large, all the bands. Uh, it's got proprietary system that just came up here.
Does it? But it, it would apply to a single use.
But it's still, no, you could, you could.
Still, but it's still regulated by a panel help.
Yeah. Isn't it pre, I don't know if it's DEQ or panel health. Those were.
Every treatment.
I think it's, I, I think it's, I, no, it's not pre-treat. I don't believe, well.
Why we say a public, urban, urban sewer is. Sewer system regulated by. By the Department of Environment and all.
I put or PhD, cause I think there's a threshold of an LSAS when it hits. I don't know the gallons per day threshold when it goes to DEQ versus when it can be regulated by PhD.
Above ground versus below. That's what she told us.
I don't know, we could, we could ask him.
That came up in our repart. Okay, yeah.
I know PhD has a regulatory authority at certain gallons per day.
Right.
And then after it hits this, that threshold, it goes to DEQ even if it's below the ground. But I, I could be wrong, Alan, I don't know, I, I don't know this stuff. I see, we, we could craft it and then send it off to them and, you know.
It's either PhD or. How do you, who's gonna? Take care of it, that's in the definition.
Yeah, but panel health also relates.
Individual septic system.
Individual septic system.
That's the problem.
But they're, well, they are doing it under DEQ's oversight. All of them. That's how people, that's how the district.
If you write the definition that way, you don't exclude individual septic systems from the definition of urban sewer.
Right.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Now, you could specifically ex- exclude that, you, you mean, you could write the definition the way it is and, and say. Specifically excluding individual septic systems for individual properties.
Or, or like above, add that language unless somebody to approve sewer management agreement.
I just had a wild thought too.
Either way.
Who is the, who is the management here?
There's some private different companies out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we wanna see? Urban services in. Five acre and larger areas.
No, no.
This doesn't prove them.
Well, so let me, let me back up, do we want to see them?
I mean, that would.
I don't, I don't think we want to require them.
But.
If somebody wants to do it.
But that's, that's, that's cracking the door.
There's a, there's a, there's a large development around the corner from you that's doing it, well, with eventually with large lots, right?
So that, that scenario of multiple shared wells. It was on five acre lots.
It's closer to.
It was like ten five acre lots served by five wells. And they wanted to consider that a urban, or a, a community. It was public water system.
Yeah.
On five acre lots, so.
Yeah, uh, right, I, I guess, I mean, I.
I don't thi- so again, I, I, I don't think we wanna require it. If I, in five acre and larger, but, but if, if there was a reason to do it, I, I mean, the Camp Bay development. Around the corner for me. Um, some of their lots, I think once they get to phase two or three, there's gonna be ten acre lots. But they're building a community sewer system.
They're trying to. It's been shut down.
No, they, they pulled that application.
Yeah.
Really?
It's gone.
They went through a hearing, it was approved and then later. There was, there was enough roadblocks by the state agencies that decided not to know that.
Okay, that's such, that's.
But they intended to.
They intended to.
They intended to, they wanted to.
What I see is that's a possibility that's. They're, they're served by, urban sewer and or water. Then they could come back and they say, well, you know, we're gonna have to make this work, we gotta go down two and a half acre lots. So we're gonna split up all of our ten acres. And I'm sure if some of those people that buy those lots down in Camp Bay, they're gonna say, it's ridiculous, I need twenty acres. I don't need an acre or quarter, I'm gonna sell the rest, because I got urban services. Yes, I'm going. We're, we're introducing urbanization.
But, but, but that only happens in, if you're in the suburban zone.
Well, it, it, yeah, but.
And, and, and.
Don't make the case to change it all.
Well, hopefully, so, hopefully, we're being clear enough. That they have to be. Nearby. Major transportation corridor to be in the suburban zone.
I, I was.
And they would fail that test.
I was thinking about even perfect urban or suburban. Zoning into that definition. Would you do that?
But there are, that's where my point is, there are other requirements.
Well, right.
To be suburban, you have to be near a major transportation corridor.
Yeah.
Can't be.
So it would, if somebody proposed Camp Bay to go two and a half acre lots. That, that other stuff would kick in.
Right.
I hope.
I would know.
Except for they were more late. They're already there.
Okay, so where are we, where are we? I think urban sewer should be. Be regulated to most systems.
Yeah. Should be what, Alan?
So again. But to nitpick this. Is, is my individual septic system regulated by panel health, is that publicly regulated?
It's not a sewer system. But is. Well, then you gotta define.
Which disposal system. Well, after all I said.
Sewer or septic, sewer or septic. Oh, it's. It's in my mind, that's.
Now we're gonna have to define sewer. Is the other, is the other, well, is the other distinct, relevant distinction here that it serves more than one. Parcel.
Yeah. That's a good one.
It's, cause that, then that excludes the individual septic system.
Right.
Case, so if you said. Sewer system serving more than one parcel that are publicly regulated.
I think that sounds good. I vote for that. Save me, save me.
You always ask me to say. Uh, okay, we, are we down?
Urban water and sewer.
Which are regulated by, which are publicly regulated.
Listen, access is density. Density. The number of lots are, 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 are units.
Wait, we wanna go back to water and.
Yes, yes.
We wanna call that same thing or water, urban water? I don't know if I.
You delete everything you just did? Just for sewer.
To water system regulated by either the environment or quality, is that we wanna leave that?
Yeah.
I was good.
I don't know if I have a consensus, I mean, you guys.
Well, if, there was some discussion of leaving it the way it is today. And, and if somebody wants to change it. They can change it in the future. So to leave it the way it is today. I think you would say. It's not the water system serving. More than one parcel. So that takes care of the case, at the, at the very smallest end of the spectrum. It's a well serving two parcels.
Are two parts, right?
Yep, and. And anything larger than that. That's the way it's been interpreted today.
It's a pretty low bar.
It is a low bar.
It is, but.
But again, I mean, Matt explained the logic behind it, it wa- it was. It was key to when you allow. Or how you allow. The higher density case of the suburban zoning district. Because we recognize that you have to have setbacks between wells and, and septic, and septic systems.
Yeah.
And by reducing the number of wells a half, you increase the probability that you can maintain those setbacks. That's why it was done. Okay, so urban sewer, I just changed. Changed them into our publicly regulated. Rather than it's out toward, out towards the end.
But the property is a public. The property is a. Publicly regulated. Denominator might be.
Publicly regulated sewer system, they're serving more than one property.
Wordsmith, wordsmith.
Okay, how about density?
Density. Dwelling units per acre. See what our lots break.
Well, see, there's two contexts, there are those two contexts.
Mass per unit of volume. Yeah, that's, that's what we do. I think we should put that up.
Um, so I hear this. Like. Convoluted in arguments all the time. Right, when. You look at a. Multifamily on a single lot, uh, it's a duplex, is that density of two dwelling units, is a house and ADU two? Is it a density of single family dwellings or all dwellings, is it, we're talking about density of lots?
Um.
Yes, the parcel density or population.
Then you can also add in to convolute it more. Um, density of commercial, right, so take a, a RV park is a good example. Um, it was being argued that, you know, the density is too high in our RV park. Um, but if we're limiting the duration of state and that's not a population, that's a short term, so. I don't know, I. Yeah, a lot of this is depending on context, right?
Quite. Quite, I think, but density, density by the general term. Reap, refers to the number of units per certain something, something. Units per something, it's a, it's a. It's, it's, but it's the number, it's the number of, of lots or buildings or residences. For area, given area, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, I mean, density doesn't mean, it's a parking lot, I density, we already defined my density. Why you need density? Cause it's used in there, pick it up. All by itself.
Those were.
So we're not, we're not talking specifically about single family dwelling or dwelling units, we're talking about lots, lots or, or properties, right? So.
But certainly define it, I know that's.
Go back up to high, high density. See, right there.
So that's.
Lot for acre.
Yeah, but this is just density.
Well, it's just acres of looking, yeah, that isn't even density.
It's lots per acre. It is lots per acre.
And I still think on that, and I answer should.
There's enough, probably two, two point five acres.
And lower density should be. Uh. It is two. Two point five or more. More, yeah, right, was less than or equal to or more than. Right. But that's not even density, that's parcel size.
Yeah, that's.
Two from five acres of what, for what? For world, I don't know, no, it's not, that's not a density.
It's lots per acre. That's a minimum, minimum parcel size. Lots breaker does not have to be greater than.
Actually, no, high density should be less than two and a half, two and a half acres or less.
Well.
For lot, and, and then you need to have.
Up, up to two and a half acres is unclear about whether that includes two and a half acres.
Well, then you would say it doesn't. Well, then I'm just also then a low is, is two point five or more. Or less.
Well, well, no. Less is one acre, right?
Less is one acre.
Uh, so high density, so. The number of one acre lots is, you know, get a bigger. Area is. For the.
A lot more smaller. Or small. So small, they're so smaller, it'd be better. Or larger than a little bit. Two and a half. Larger than two and a half acres. Larger than two and a half acre.
Put in there.
They had a lot of.
Minimum lot size, wouldn't that make sense?
Yeah, that would be better, totally.
Well, what about, so I, I should put in there also the number of residential units per acre? I guess. Like one, one really, one unit per acre? Well, and.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't remember what we did, quite honestly, but I remember. I don't know, I remember it goes a long time ago, but in the single suburbia plan. We defined both, so we said, you can have lots up to. In this case, two and a half acres. And then we said you could have one residence per parcel.
Most of the suburbs did that. One, five, one dwelling unit for twenty eight.
Yeah, period. Five acre lots, one dwelling unit.
ADUs, no. Yeah.
Uh, that, that's why I was asking at the beginning, are we talking about the number, the density of lots or the density of dwellings?
It depends on the context in which we use the term.
Pretty density, talking about lot size, doesn't really equate to density. It's lot size. Because, yeah, everybody, everybody thinks of it as density, I know they do, but it's. So, so when the church meets a church for church.
So, why we say. One dwelling unit per acre?
Is what, is what the definition for identity?
Yeah.
It made more sense, because that's a ratio. On something, or something.
But then, I, I don't, I don't think we should do that, cause right in the very beginning, we said, we wanted this to cover. The suburban zone, cause we consider the suburban zone. By the unincorporated county to be the high density part of the, of, uh, unincorporated town. And. And the five and ten and twenty acre zones are the lower density, low density parts of the town. So, so I think we should go.
In that context. Have a lot coverage or a lot usage. It's a different. Definition of density. Residential density. Maybe that's the key.
Two and a half. Per acre?
Residential density. I like that.
How do we get to dwellings? I think we're talking about lots. Okay. So then the the question's gonna arise. What about EDUs and?
Yeah.
Cause you're defining which which density you're talking about.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, that's if D is one day. It is another.
I had someone arguing to me that the density table of chapter four. Means that only one per five acres, therefore no we can have any view on a five acre.
Right?
I'm like, wow, what it says? What says?
Alright, so uh. They're gonna change all this, so nothing happened, so development. You guys gonna be here when this is discussed at the at the board meeting, please?
No.
I feel compelled to show up at these things. And then yak in the whole time. What do you mean on the? Well, okay, but I mean. This is gonna come up as a standalone issue, the lottery.
Cecil slopes.
Isn't this, isn't this part of the land use component, this lottery?
So I don't think so, I think it should be, I think it should be adopted as an appendix to the conflict, so. Which means it won't go before this board for a hearing, so you're you're crafting something that the future of the planning commission is gonna be there to be with.
Alright, that was our journey.
You wanna table this till October? So.
So then density is the number of single family dwellings allowed per acre.
Right here, yeah, that's dancing, that's my mind of dancing, perfect land use dancing.
Alright, I know that, so development. I got one here. Well, creation of lots. Or buildings and associated infrastructure.
Perfect, perfect, I like it.
Okay, you guys all agreed, what was that again?
Lots and or build and or buildings and associated infrastructure.
Ratio of lots. And associated. Or buildings. And associate.
What's new development?
Cause that's the creation. I think that would be the definition of new development, cause it says.
We just put it on in the past sense.
When we use, when we use the term development, we were basically referring to lots or buildings.
Yeah, I don't think there's any.
Well, it's kinda hard to develop something that. The cost land didn't look at existing development, it looked at new well.
Yeah, that was the gist, the gist of it, of when new development happens. We're not gonna go back and start attacking existing development. We want a definition from both as keep the same.
Gonna strike that one.
Good deal.
Actually, that's a really good definition. Would you chat G for that now?
What's that? Well, we'll use the same intuitiveness for services. It doesn't need to be defined.
Services, but we have public, private services, urban services up here. Now we want just services.
Well, I think you just picked up because the the word services is standalone word somewhere in a sentence. So I picked it up, so what does that mean? People wanna, people wanna take it on themselves to try to understand it. Push anything. Mission, so. He found it, go to them. Say roads utilities.
I don't think we define services, I mean, we we already talked about public services, we can determine that private service doesn't make no sense. Well, you got urban services.
My, that was my tape before because. Our roads.
Your structure is the set of facilities and systems that serve a county. And encompasses the services and facilities necessary for its economic households.
Infrastructure. Is a basic physical and organizational frameworks, frameworks. Systems and facilities, services and equipment that a county, city, or region requires to function and develop.
Absolutely, services, the invention services.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think they think that everybody knows what services means.
A taxing district that provides.
So there you go, you want this one?
This for infrastructure?
Yeah.
I put utilities associated with the creation of lots, parcels or buildings. It just ties back to development.
But they don't have to be associated with the creation.
Okay.
Right?
It's a basic physical organizational frameworks, systems of facilities, services and equipment. That a county, city or region requires for function and develop.
It includes all the words that we dropped, they're fine.
I know, they'll come back and say, what's facilities? What's equi- equipment?
What's services?
What's the county? What's the, what's the country? What's a region? It includes trap, public and private structures, systems. Like transportation, roads, bridges, airports. Energy grids, water, surge, sewage systems, communications networks. As well as social providers. Such as hospitals and schools. All of which are provided by tax districts, taxing districts.
For the most part, there are private, but. Public services, as we look at the public service component. Those were taxing.
This is unique to here though.
Oh, green, let's see, it's completely associated with the state, so. And there gets a little wild. Actual people access and chat.
There you go, get summary, okay.
Recreational uses.
Cause we do have. Our different use tables, but recreational uses is quoted many times, especially throughout the policies. So to figure out what is, what what was your guys' thoughts when we were listing out recreational uses?
You know, I can't remember which, it was Sally or Segal. Down ahead, listen, I mean, there's a swoop. Skiing, boating too. Suburbies, and it's where we play, how we play.
I think a key distinguishing characteristic. Relative to the. Controversy, I suspect you're worried. Is whether it's commercial or not. Is it, is it?
Here's a. Google generated. Something. I did recreational land uses, that's what popped up.
That's good, love it. It's a starting point till they change it.
Bike parks in there, so. Recreational facilities, we're talking about low impact, I forget what the, but they include snowmobiling. Which, like, who thought that part of it?
When the snow melts and springs, nothing left.
Alright.
I mean, I really, you could, we can make a list of the common recreational pursuits in modern county pretty easily. Uh, but to me, the the key distinction criteria is, is it something that people are free to just go do? Or is it a facility where somebody is charging people money?
But you need to have, you know, playgrounds or recreational, you know, athletic, you know, sports.
So we're talking. So you want to encompass encompass both. Public and private uses. So the commercial goes on private property and such as a.
I know, I don't think it should include commercial, non-commercial. Why not? So golf. Because then I think it's better treated as a commercial use, not a recreational. For me to go, to use the controversial women's out there, for me to go ride my mountain bike around the trails of gamble. That's a recreational use, it's different if somebody wants to. Charge me to come onto their property to ride a mountain bike. Uh, and they want to invite six hundred other people there at the same time.
Well, take the less controversial ones, like there's right outside of town, you have a disc golf course and you can use. You know, for free.
Yeah.
It's on by the city, it's in the city limits, but we can all argue that that's a recreational. On Selly Valley, there are two different world-class disc golf courses we can pay the users. Um, that have been. I would, I would consider one of those recreations.
I would consider golf courses recreation.
Well, it says so in our com- component for recreation.
Golf courses.
Golf courses. Uh, beaches, marinas, fishing, boating, downhill skiing, cross-country skiing, golfing. County fairgrounds, equestrian hunting, berry picking, mushrooming. Snow camp.
Snow taping.
Can't go, it okay, we just can't.
Okay, oh.
Uh, dog sled race.
Dog sleds.
Yes, here's one, so directly uses refers to engaging in activity or enjoyment. For for enjoyment, pleasure or fun, especially during leisure time. It can include activities like sports, hobbies. Or consuming recreational. We're gonna take that one.
The sunbathing would be a recreation according to those definitions.
Absolutely. What I do in my off hours. So catch some rays.
So marinas is another one, cause you have public and private marinas, and some you both have to pay for either. But you could have public marinas, you have to pay. Or privately.
Round Lake, gotta pay.
So I don't know if you wanna just exclude all commercial from recreational uses, I guess that's my idea. Wonder where. You think it's up recreational use.
Creates a loophole. Without some consideration of the scale. Is the issue.
Doesn't it really come down to impact what's appropriate, give the impact in a given area?
Yeah. You know, yeah, which is a consideration of the scale.
And you have, you've been defined scale as in the size of the property or the number of.
No, I think.
Or.
It's, I mean, a big factor is gonna be the amount of traffic that it generates, right?
If you have twelve visitors per month on a six hundred acre piece. Versus six hundred.
Cause something is a recreational use, doesn't mean it's committed.
Right, so, or requiring, yeah, and we're not trying to prescribe. Her impact happens, we're just trying. But they are saying like recreational uses a lot.
Yep, that's true.
Alright, well, I think we've done about what we can.
I think that recreational uses.
Where he found recreational uses. In the implementation component under recreation. Is recreational opportunities. Lot of recreation uses.
I think it's in the implementation components. I wanna say there was two or three slots I can pull it out.
I remember that too. That's when it first came up.
I think it's in the land use.
Um, so there's one in the economic development policy number six. Allow for campgrounds and recreational uses, protecting and surrounding areas, reverse impacts.
Yeah.
Uh, number seven, same thing, it calls it recreational uses. Um, commercial, industrial, agricultural and recreational uses. That's the two spots there. Holding the economic development. Six and seven, as adopted.
I think we could find it. Right. So, Jake, are you gonna be at the next meeting on the sixteen?
Nope.
Well. Behalf of myself, I would just like to thank you for your participation with us on these last. Three years, I think you've done a great job and your staff's done a great job assisting us and trying to get this thing done. And although none of us are gonna see the end results. I think we did a good job and I was certainly with your help, I appreciate.
Thank you. I might be here and remember the public, there's a question, say, well, we'll see how far I get.
You gonna make public comments?
I don't think you'd like what I have to say though. I'll be really neutral, stand up there and say, this is a text minimum, it is processed by staff, then I'll sit down. Okay, I think I have, we have at least a draft here, I'll save this into. The component spot you guys have.
So Alan, before we close training.
Yeah, good, good points, I, I, yeah.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, does anybody have any feedback, thoughts?
Well, I think Dave, uh, said what I would probably said, yeah, some of that's, some of that's going to come from Bill Wilson.
Yep.
Hopefully. Well, and I think.
Are you sure he's gonna do that again, Jake, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not.
Is he, is he mandated to do that by the board? Because we had to ask him to do it the last time.
He's not mandated, it's, I mean, it's a working relationship I built with Bill. To provide that training to all new commissioners, just to. Start the foot off right on comfort of interest and expertise.
But I think, I think Eric, you're, you know, it's. I I just don't know what's gonna, what's. Gonna be the lay of land, you know, at one time, cause we have a new planning director. Obviously, the planning director has some. Influence to how he wants the commission. To operate, even though we're not bound by what he wants. Yeah, I think. Some training is sorely needed, there's an awful lot of stuff that goes into this. Planning commission, so. You know, I think. Uh, there was a suggestion that. You know, there should be required reading, people should read the ground plan. Uh, if they need to read, uh, the top twelve.
Absolutely, Dave's list is fantastic. Yeah, I appreciate that.
I think, I think that's, that's really important, and I think that. Soon as people are selected for the planning commission, they ought to be saying. You need the comp plan. And hopefully. Sooner or later, they'll adopt land use component. Uh, at least they can read all the other components. And, and how well.
And behind that, some of the, the deeper, so what? Comes out of court cases and so forth, so. Jerry Mason, the guy I mentioned before. He's city attorney for various cities around here, he's, he's the attorney for the Association of municipal cities. He had a series of, of videos that he put out. The last reference I could find it.
Is that the name you couldn't?
Jerry, the last one I could find was twenty twenty, so I don't know if he's doing it anymore. And it's kind of a thing where you can't just put it out in two thousand twelve, have it last forever, he's got it updated all the time, so he may not be doing that. But he is, he does, he's part of a law firm in Court Lanes, they're down on Northwest Door. Uh, so I sent a call to his office to say, what's up today, is anything out there? And whether he's the only one in the state that's ever done it, I don't know. But he's, he's the guy, he was the go-to guy for a couple decades. He came here and talked with us back in. Twenty thirteen or fifteen or something. Give us some nice presentation, he gets into. Here's the code, here's the intent of things, here's how it works, here's what court cases do. Here's precedent setting and all that stuff. Who's extra beyond with the code, so I'll go, but.
Yeah, the, the, the reference book that Dave referred to that gives it personally.
Right, firstly, yeah.
It's a line medal. You know, it's, it's, it's a really good reference, if you wanna go back. See, okay, what, yeah, and that is really mean or why is it here or whatever, that's a very good one. I, I, I can't imagine anybody sitting down and reading it covering, cause. You go pick, pick and choose what you wanna see.
And in a sense, Jerry's stuff is that way too, cause the, the two videos that I watched, it definitely rambles. And goes down some rabbit holes, but. He's trying to get to the point where there's more to it than just the code itself, just it extends out in his courts and. The one, the one thing I would ask more too, and. You learn as you're sitting here, but the sole way appropriate to plan or whoever's gonna be is how the meetings go, like, do you motion? Process of the media, right?
Right.
Cause to me, this is only. Yeah, it's not anything that I've ever been before, some of you guys have other councils, you guys. They can farm this type of processes, but. For me, that's only, so that just that basic. Rules, basically, and and procedure, but which is our procedural slide that we put up. Is the part of the order of events.
But also on a personal note, I really enjoyed my tenure on this mission, so appreciate. All you guys, all your contributions. We cut the simple. Not that.
You did, you did eleven. Uh, you did not put in eleven.
I did put a lot of them. Do, do. Continue, oh. Okay, I did not.
That's two out of three, Matt, what about you? No? And they muzzle gets to come out.
Oh, my goodness. Uh, we're gonna have a problem. You're gonna get leaves three new commissions.
Wow. Boy, you're transplanning director, it's gonna be, uh, boy.
I'd be surprised if we had any planning director before January.
I agree, yeah.
And on that note.
Really?
Um.
Oh, yeah.
We started five months.
Or.
Higher. Human resource director.
How many?
I think it was five months. Could have been four.
It, it's, it's a.
So what, you know, this, so it serves him, like, no. Now, they're not, they're not gonna adopt the land use from, until November, so what's the planning commission gonna do between now?
Training. Yeah, that's only.
I don't mean pizza parties.
So, your next agenda for your next meeting on the sixteenth is just those two hearing items, I'm assuming you don't wanna add anything else to the agenda?
Once a second.
You have the chapter six stuff and then. Yeah, yeah, they're all code amendments, they're two different code amendments.
Did anybody watch that session last week, they had a, a zone change and then the implementation component of the zone change? Okay. First time ever. For present board accounting commissioners. In looking at. A ten acre zone parcel request to go to five, his criteria, his criteria for each. First time ever, they said, well, one of those criteria still applies to your property as a ten acre parcel denied. And it was prime ag about distance. And. Yeah, so that's first time ever, it's always been, well, it's more like this, which is what the presentation, side by side comparison, my goodness, look at this, it all ranks up here. And not there, so it's gotta go with that, that's when the historic, don't change. Crack. But they, they very much changed it.
That piece of code is so horribly written, you can, you could take wherever you want out of it.
Oh, that's a thing.